Late, but our work session ran over. Do we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Halsted.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
And Dr. Warner.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the presentation of the National Colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Brookpoint High School's Navy JROTC.
Colors. Left hand, foot. Or arm. Forward march. Colors. Foot. Or arm. Ready, cut. Left face. Carry colors. Ready, cut. Greed and colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or colors. Ready, cut. Right face. Or arm. Forward march.
We'd like to thank the following members of tonight's color guard. Kayla Kratz, Joshua Bullock, Anthony Trader, and Richard Schmidt. The leaders of the Brookpoint High School JROTC program are Major Michael Darnell, Master Sergeant Selwyn Reed, and First Sergeant Jason Polanco. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an emotion to amend the agenda to move item, I think it's 10.03, to information and wait until we have our budget completed before we vote to approve this.
Second.
And that is the turf fields. May I ask a question first? Dr. Taylor, if that is put off for information, will that affect the potential installation of those fields for this summer?
Madam Chair, it would change the timeline.
All right, so the motion is to put it on for information?
Yes. I would just like to know more firmly what our budget is before we vote to approve this.
Okay, and that is also something that, I guess, if action weren't taken, that could affect it as well. All right, any other discussion? Ms. Randall?
What money, because we're getting such a large, over, what, two and a half million from the supervisors and our contribution is so much smaller.
Well, I guess my concern is that we have $710,000 investments that need to be made to repair the athletic fields at three of our high schools, $761,000 at another high school. We have huge expenditures on our three-hour project, but we also don't even know what our budget is for next year. And we have, I would just like to wait till I know what that is before we vote to approve the spending of this money. And I realize that the county is coming up with a large chunk of it. It's just that I feel like it's something I would like to see where we are financially before we approve it. It's, you know, it's also about a million dollars more than we had budgeted for this particular, for the turf fields.
I always thought it was a million and a half per. And it's-
Three-hour project we received, it was, is originally budgeted at about a little over, it was like 1.1.
Per field?
Per field.
Per. Can we get Chris to help us with this?
Well, I'd suggest that the board, we can have this discussion when we get to the item. There's two ways you can go. You can approve the agenda with this move to information, in which case there is no opportunity to approve it this evening and therefore no possibility of getting the fields for the fall, for these two schools that have never had these fields.
Yeah.
Or we can leave it on for action, in which case if there is, you know, following the discussion, there is a majority of the board that either wants to not approve it or to defer it, that could be taken as part of the action.
That's really, that was gonna be my point. This impacts 100% of the families in the Garrisonville District. That's one-seventh of our community that does not have access to something that the rest do. So I think speed and time is of the essence, especially with so much investment from across the street already being promised, even before they've set their budget. If they're willing to kind of take the risk, then I think it's worth keeping it for our students as well.
If we leave it on for action, that doesn't mean it's approved. It means we will discuss it and could potentially take action on it.
Yep.
So if we amend the agenda and put it on for information, then we will not be taking action. And again, as Dr. Taylor just told us, there is no possibility to feel. So just so everybody understands what this vote is, your vote is not to approve the item and go with this expenditures, it's to discuss the item as an action item this evening and potentially approve it. And even if we were to approve it this evening, that doesn't mean it's gonna happen because it's all pending the appropriation. So-
Correct.
Is everybody clear on what we're going to be voting on?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification to move the turf field action item to information. All in favor, cast your vote. Or not in favor as well. Did mine-
Did you? You can fix it.
Oh, no, you got two minutes.
So this is, leaving it.
Wait a minute, yeah. You know what? I know, I, oh. You know what? Can we have a redo? Mr. Tally? Are you there? In Neverland? Okay. So, voting to amend the agenda. All right, if you want to amend the agenda, say yes. If you don't want to amend the agenda and leave it on for action, say no. Okay? All right, thank you, sir. Where you are?
Tally the vote. This is awful.
Tally the vote. All right. Do we have another motion?
A move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a move, motion to approve the agenda. Cast your vote. Oh, yeah. I know. I voted too.
I did vote.
We're just learning to use these clickers. We're practicing for jeopardy. Where's our HR guy that can give us some tips? Because obviously mine's not working. All right, there you go. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Talking into mine with the remote.
Now, 16 minutes later, we have a agenda. That brings us to awards and recognition. The first is item 4.01, proclamation for the month of the military child.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Taylor and distinguished guests. At this time, we'd like to invite Colonel Brooks, the commander of Ranger Base Quantico, and Ms. Penny Rowley, the K-12 liaison from Ranger Base Quantico. A proclamation to designate April 2022 as the month of the military child. Whereas Stafford County is proud to be home to many children whose parents serve in the military stationed throughout the local region. And whereas April has been designated by the Virginia Department of Education as the month of the military child, which is a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military members and their children for the daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support for our armed forces. And whereas Virginia has one of the highest numbers of military, school-aged children in the nation, and is committed to being an active participant in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which facilitates military children transitioning in school systems across state lines. And whereas the children of our service members continue to make significant contributions to schools, community, the nation, and our Commonwealth despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents. And whereas all of Virginia's public schools remain committed to the care and education of the children of the men and women of our armed forces. And whereas by partnering with school liaison officers, military leaders, educators, and community organizations, VDOE provides the unique support needed for our military service members and their families during all stages of transition and deployment. And whereas month of the military child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that other children their age never experience. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, that the school board of Stafford County hereby proclaims April 2022 as the month of the military child throughout the school division. Adopted by the school board of Stafford County on this 22nd day of March 2022. Thank you.
And we're all wearing purple in support of military children and their military families today, so thank you.
All right, next we are, we're gonna recognize our Stafford High School Theater Group. As I call your name, you guys can step forward.
And I want Dr. Chase and Ms. Randall to join us because they're the Stafford High School.
The superintendent would like to recognize individuals each month who have contributed significantly to the goodwill and advancement of positive culture among their school, department, and our community. We are honored tonight to recognize the Stafford High School Theater Group for their VHSL Theater Championship and their All-Star Cast Awards from the Southeastern Theater Conference. On Saturday, March 5th, Stafford High School Theater won the Virginia High School League State Theater Championship with their production of The Secret in the Wings. The team won with a unanimous decision by the judges and earned a perfect score. Stafford High School now holds the record for the most consecutive state theater wins. Stafford also won all four of the Outstanding Acting Awards, which went to Sarah Abella, Dawson Carneal, Aaron Hogan, and Jackson Henry, with an honorable mention for Miles Bellano. If you guys are here, come on up and accept your award. If they're not here. The cast also includes Haley Ide. Come on up as I call your name. Leila Davis, Anna Marie Ure, Tyler Gilkerson, and Gwendolyn Ware. The stage crew includes Marlena Ball, Mercedes Benz-Buschling, Ryan Glasscock, Sienna Green, Emily Harrod, Levi Jarvis, Savannah Jordan, Siddiq Kareem, Josephine Martinez, Silas Newman, Darby Redman, Max Redman, and Charlie Turner. The team previously earned the Virginia Theater Conference State Championship with their production of The Secrets in the Wings, earning the honor of representing Virginia at the Southeastern Theater Conference in Memphis, Tennessee last week. Again, this talented group of students garnered awards. Two students, Aaron Hogan and Gwendolyn Ware, received All-Star Cast Award at the conference. Congratulations to this cast and their tremendously talented instructors, Mr. Michael Dodario and Ms. Corey Holmes. For their consistent encouragement and coaching, this team is surely one to watch.
All right, everybody right here. Thank you.
And now I'd like to read a proclamation for the Virginia House of Delegates. The Commonwealth of Virginia General Assembly, House Resolution Number 599, commending Stafford County Public Schools. Agreed to by the House of Delegates, February 27, 2021. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Stafford County Public Schools has provided students aged 18 and younger with a two-day supply of breakfast and lunch meals every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, a total of 12 meals per week. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools successfully prepared, transported, and served 18,120 meals to students and families in its first week of providing meals. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools has provided free meals to children and their families throughout the community regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, age, or disability. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools coordinated food drop-off locations for people in need throughout the county. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools used Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funding to make technology upgrades in the classroom to better support virtual learning and teaching while accommodating students with little or no internet access at home. And whereas the teachers, bus drivers, and other staff of Stafford County Public Schools have worked diligently to meet the unique challenges facing schools as the result of the COVID-19 pandemic and continue to support local students now. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Stafford County Public Schools hereby be commended for its service to Stafford County residents during the COVID-19 pandemic, and be it resolved further that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Stafford County Public Schools as an expression of the House of Delegates admiration for the school division's commitment to its students, their families, and the people of Stafford County. House patrons Cole, Cole, and London King, clerk of the House of Delegates. Congratulations to everyone in the school division and to all of our families for supporting our students during this pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne, and thank you, Ms. Guy, for bringing that to us.
You're welcome.
She brought it at the last meeting, special delivery. That brings us to item number five, citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk, who is Ms. Hall sitting right in front here. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals requiring desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113, Public Complaints. We have 40 citizens who have signed up for comment. Ms. Hall is gonna call you in groups of five, so when your name is called, please line up on one of the sides. We wanna make sure we get through this as expeditiously as we can so we can move on for topics that I'm sure you all are probably speaking on tonight. So Ms. Hall, if you can call the first five people?
Yes, ma'am. Ginger Beach, Melissa Holzauer, Jesus Reyes Rodriguez, Rebecca Wardlow, and Julie Param.
Hi, my name is Ginger Beach. I teach at Brookpoint High School. I've been in the county for 20 years, all my years at Brookpoint. I teach our science and honor to our science and IB, Environmental Systems and Societies. So first tonight, I'd like to speak about the observations that my colleagues and I have witnessed through this year of a late start time versus the previous years that I've been teaching for 22 years at two in another county. So early on, it seemed that the drive behind the high school students having a later start time was based on data that shows students learn better later in the day. And in my 22 years of teaching, I have not seen any difference at all in student achievement this year with a later start time. Considering the day starts later, students stay up later. Upperclassmen that work or play in sports get home so late that they then stay up until 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. completing their homework. And many of my own seniors have told me that exact thing. Another factor of students staying up late has caused our tardies to school to be more than double in the past few years. As of two weeks ago, we have had 8,600 tardies to school up to this point in the school year versus 3,000, around 3,500 tardies to school in the previous years at the same timeframe during the school year. The new bell schedule created is supposed to accommodate special programs, athletics, and activities. This year with a later start time, many of our extracurricular activities have been cut because several of our teachers cannot stay after school until 4:30 or 5:00 to sponsor clubs because they live in other counties and have long commutes and family obligations. This hurts our students because many colleges and universities require extracurricular activities as part of their academic admissions requirements. In regards to athletics, the teachers and coach, the coach at Brookpoint have asked me to please speak on their behalf because they're at games tonight and they could not be here. So sports are another avenue for some students to get a higher education, to get out of the family cycle of poverty. A bell schedule that would require high school students to start late would take this opportunity away from them because they will lose coaches. Many of our coaches do not get home until after 10:00 p.m. on a school night. Students also get home at 8:00 after many of their practices. This is not a sustainable model for either the students or the teachers. Many of our students between 15 and 18 are forced to make adult decisions on whether to help their families with a job or put their academics first. They have to make a decision between keeping up their grades or earning money to support their families. Students that have not, students that have to take a job can't start their shift at 3:00 or 4:00 like they used to, and they have later start times. With the later start times, they get off later, they get home later, and then they choose whether or not to do their homework if they have enough time. Now I'd like to discuss the data that was presented to the county from the survey that was calculated. I'm out of time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because we've got 40 speakers who are really not able to extend the time.
You still get it? Okay. Because definitely broke down the data about how it's very skewed, but hopefully someone else from my department of school will break that out.
Thank you. And I apologize in advance, but with 40 speakers, we really aren't gonna have extra time.
Madam Chair, is there a reason why that yellow light isn't working to give them a warning indicator?
Because I was looking at this, which was saying four minutes, and like I wasn't paying attention to that.
Yeah, so we used to have that yellow light flash for them so that they knew their time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that means start talking fast.
I'm not shaking today. All right, here we go. Melissa Holzauer, parent and proud Blackhawk, a proud Blackhawk parent and teacher. Back again to logically compare the elementary and high school arguments for an early start. First, research shows, and the so-called slump. We are in a post-pandemic world. The last two years were unprecedented in human history. There are far too many variables to apply outdated research to a modern problem. Our students are slumping across the board, not just in elementary schools. Students were given reduced hours and expectations during virtual learning. It will take time to build back their stamina and our expectations, but with the rising consistency, consistency, excuse me, we can achieve this goal together for our kids. Number two, we have too much change, so just keep it as it is for consistency's sake. Keep a failing solution because we are too afraid to admit we made a mistake? Isn't it better to, isn't it a better answer to be reasonable and flexible, to take an honest look at what the changes in hours have produced across the board, and ask ourselves if keeping a broken system is truly a better fix simply because it's familiar? Number three, high school students don't need to wake up early because they can take 11:00 a.m. classes in college. Well, they can also be like me and take classes from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00, but I did so after opening at Starbucks every day from 4:00 a.m. to 12:00 to pay for my education. These arguments, though, assume that they are college bound in the first place when 36% go directly into the workforce. They will need to learn to wake early and be productive all day. We had 3,200 tardies in 2018, 2019. Currently, and we are just starting quarter three, we now have 8,600 so far this year at Brook. That does not include buses being late, so that's no buses. We should focus on academics, not clubs. While the high school argument is academic, it focuses on student growth and independence, we are asking for time to tutor students. Pleading with you to say clubs and sports that motivate students to stay in school, stay away from drugs and alcohol, and keep them from fornicating in their cars on back roads. We are focused on the whole child. Hours don't come bouncing off buses. We deal with drugs, sex, suicide, and mental instability, all will provide exceptional academic opportunities. I'd like to bring your attention to a quote published in November 2021 in Education Weekly. The global pandemic has exacerbated risk factors for violence in general, like loneliness, isolation, and economic instability. Violence also tends to rise at times of uncertainty, especially when distrust in public institutions is high, and social media serves as an accelerant, whipping up anger and frenzy. One of the solutions suggested in the article was purposeful community engagement, the kind that comes from clubs and sports that promote face-to-face interactions with diverse peers. Finally, I'll leave you with a quote from Ambigal Van Buren. If you want children to keep their feet on the ground, put some responsibility on their shoulders. There's no better teacher of time management than life itself. No better motivator than tiny paychecks from an entry-level position to get kids to realize continued education is a path to a brighter future. And no better way to create equity and promote self-governance than giving students opportunities to build a resume full of community involvement. In a post-pandemic world, you are the pioneers. As you make this decision, you are not simply deciding who will go first, you are deciding who will be given opportunity and who will be left out. I hope that choice doesn't boil down to who doesn't need to work and who does. Thank you.
I'm an ESOL teacher in Brookpoint High School.
That was quick.
Okay.
You can start now.
I apologize for the ESOLs. So Stafford County has a growth of 35% on ESOL students in the past eight months, and that is projected to continue. So the decisions that you make today will affect this community, and I'm here to give them a voice. Because I was an ESOL student. I didn't learn English until one of my high school teachers, Ms. Torres, created a program called LITA, Learning English Through the Arts, is what it's under for. And we were able to learn English by actually using arts to learn that. That kind of program can exist on the current, on the current calendar schedule. So I'm here to be able to give you, to give those students a voice because they depend highly on our tutoring after school time. And they can't get that right now. Because the bus, the bus schedule, and there is no bus, no activity bus to actually take them back to their houses. Then there's also the aspect about working, and I know you heard this before, but you're talking about students in the ESOL community that need to work in order to survive. There's no choice for them. You're actually forcing them to make a choice between academics and survival. And that's no choice to be made. You have to choose survival. Either I eat or I don't. That's the choice that some of the students are facing. And that also includes other students in poverty in our- And that also includes other students in poverty in our county. So it's not just ESOL students. Then additionally to that, you have the way in which higher education is moving, which is to test blind or test optional. So the SAT no longer becomes an important part of what a student needs to be in college or to, to reach higher education. So you're compounding the kind of things the students have to face in order to succeed. Because now they can get the tutoring, they can get the extracurricular activities to plus up their resumes, or to get that one scholarship that will get them to break that cycle of poverty that they live in. So, it's important that you consider that this kind of stuff, how the current schedule compounds issues in certain communities, especially communities that are not represented. And I decided to come here to be able to talk, uh, from that perspective. So, I, I really hope that when you're making these decisions, you take into consideration this, this kind of information, and also take into consideration the deciding factor, the deciding factors that affect our underrepresented communities. Now, in, like I mentioned, thirty-five percent continue to grow in the county, that's going to affect also our economy. So, the opportunities of these students to succeed and make, have better jobs also will affect the way our county grows. So, with that said, that's, I, as long as, uh, please just continue to consider that. Continue to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Taylor. My name is Rebecca Wardlow. I'm a Brookpoint employee and the parent of an elementary school student here in the county. We've all heard the phrase, "The squeaky wheel gets the grease. The more vocal party gets heard and their needs or wants are met." Let me tell you how this applies to the bell schedule argument. There are roughly three thousand three hundred sixty-three total employees in the schools. Elementary school staff makes up forty-eight percent of this number, middle school makes up twenty-three percent, and high school makes up twenty-eight percent. I've heard many people quote the fifty-one percent of people wanted elementary school to go first, but unfortunately, they've taken that statistic out of context. If you look at the entire survey for that, it's fifty-one percent for elementary going first versus thirty-nine percent voting for elementary to go last. The high school survey was forty-three percent going first versus forty percent going last. You just can't take these two statistics and compare them to each other like that. It is important to note that if elementary school employees make up almost half of all school employees, that the survey that went out to parents, students, and staff, that data might be a little bit skewed from the staff point of it. I also wanted to note as well that we surveyed students at Brookpoint. We have a total population of two thousand forty-one students. We have received one thousand four hundred forty-four responses. The data from our survey overwhelmingly shows that seventy percent of our student population wants the earliest start time, and fifty-one percent of those students indicated that the reason that they wanted an earlier start time was because of jobs and extracurricular activities, including clubs and sports. Students and parents both cited after-school responsibilities or extracurriculars as the reasoning behind high school going first. Many high school students have either after-school jobs, after extracurricular activities, or both. Them getting out at the later shift would mean that they have less time available for jobs, which means limited availability to an employer. This makes them an unsuitable candidate. They're not sleeping more. Getting home late from practices or jobs means that they still have to get their homework done afterwards, and they have to stay up late to do so. High schoolers are the ones entering the workforce. Many jobs start between six and eight AM, and an early schedule in school would prepare them for this. An early start would mean an early out, which means that activity buses can run again. After-school tutoring can become a thing for those students who are struggling academically. And for those that are saying that sports aren't a good enough reason for high schoolers to go first, many teams have a GPA minimum. Without that incentive, grades are falling. Elementary schoolers going second is the best compromise. If everyone is going to try to accommodate what's best for the students, there has to be some give. Again, I implore you to look at the numbers. I implore you to listen to more than the squeaky wheel. I know that there are more options than what the vocal majority has been saying, and I hope that you consider looking through door number three to see if maybe, just maybe, a compromise can be reached. Thank you.
Ms. Hall will read the next five speakers that will follow this lady here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. As Ms. Param comes forward, I'll call the next five. Charlotte Smith, Paula, Paula Williams, Margaret Lowry, Carol Leisher, and Kim Lewis.
Ms. Ms. Hall's trying to help us get through this.
Good evening, Mrs. Healy, Dr. Taylor, and members of the board. My name is Julie Param. I live in the Griffiths-Widewater District, and I teach at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. I spoke to you at the last board meeting about my opposition to any new bell schedule that switches elementary school to the last position. I still feel that way, but I won't repeat my reasons tonight. You've heard the same thing from multiple people, and I don't see that there's any real value to telling you things that you already know. But after listening to all the speakers at the last meeting, I do want to talk about extracurricular activities for our middle and high schoolers. I'm a music teacher. My music classes were the reason I went to school. My children were both musicians, and they had fabulous experiences in the Brookpoint band programs. The band families there helped my son through a really tough move and gave my socially awkward daughter a safe place to be. I strongly believe in the value of extracurriculars and that in extracurriculars, I'm including after-school jobs for our students. I will also admit to you that from a personal standpoint, keeping elementary students earlier makes my job as a music teacher much more difficult. Running after-school ensembles is definitely not my preference. More is waiting for parents to pick up kids my idea of a good time. It is much easier for me to run my rehearsals before school. But here I am, advocating for keeping the elementary start early. Why? Because I also know that it's the best thing instructionally, not only for elementary students, but for middle and high school as well. And I believe that those who spoke at the last meeting know it too. None of them argued that the early high school start was better instructionally. They all focused on the extracurricular benefits. So now, you are left with a really difficult decision. And in that choice, you're going to demonstrate your priorities. Are the extracurricular needs of our secondary students the most important thing, or should I focus beyond the instructional needs of all our students? It really is that clear? We can't do it both. I strongly urge you to keep the main thing, instruction, the main thing, and keep our elementary students first. Thank you.
My daughter is a sophomore at Colonial Forge. This year has been challenging, to say the least. She's a manager on a basketball team, and she gets on the bus, she's supposed to get on the bus at eight-thirty-five. The bus had been late at the beginning of the school year, of course, most of you know that. Well, there was a fight on the bus, and they changed the bus timing in the, in the evening. So she was supposed to leave school at three-thirty, but because of this one fight, the bus was not coming until four o'clock. So she wasn't getting home until four-thirty. This is a problem when she has, you know, basketball practice or whatever, and she wants to, she wants to work next year, and she will get an opportunity to do that. My issue is that there are certain high schoolers who have to get out early and get their siblings off the bus for parents that have to go to work and be at work all day. So that, changing the schedule is not necessarily good for the high school students. I think it should remain the way it is. It's been this way since I was in, in school, that the high schoolers always got out early. You know, they're staying outside six o'clock, five o'clock in the morning, waiting on school buses. There's no reason for an elementary school kid to be outside there early waiting on a school bus. So I believe that it should remain the way that it is. It's just, it just makes sense. That's just my opinion.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Taylor, and members of the school board. Thank you for sharing your time and energy with, to benefit the children of Stafford County. My name is Paula Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Stafford County. I've lived in the George Washington District, the Falmouth District, and I currently am enjoying retirement in the Hartwood District at Dale Webb Celebrate. I'm here to support the installation of turf fields at Colonial Forge and North Stafford High Schools. As a career Stafford County educator, I was fortunate enough to work with many of our children as an elementary teacher, a middle school guidance counselor, a high school coach, and a field hockey official for thirty-five years. As an official, I can't begin to address the injuries occurring on lumpy, uneven, muddy grass fields, whereas turf fields promote skill and speed with little chance of cleats being caught and uneven surfaces causing ankle and knee injuries. I could talk all and on about the benefits of turf fields, but I'd rather share a brief story. As a teacher, the statement I often heard and dreaded hearing the most was, "It's just not fair." Rather than explaining life to my students, I simply replied, "We're doing the best we can." But one day, I heard a child mumble back to me, "Well, we need to do better." Yes, we need to do better. Seven years without equity and parity at Colonial Forge and North Stafford, how can we continue to expect those teams and students to drive to turf facilities to play and practice? Our students might not understand equity and parity, but they do understand fairness. It's a school board word of the month. I urge you to make it fair. We need to do better. Let's fund those fields. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Margaret Lowry, and I live in the Rock Hill District. I don't even live in Garrisonville District or Hartwood District. I have no children or grandchildren who go to Colonial Forge or North Stafford, but I'm here again tonight as a citizen to appeal to you to vote to solve the parity issue among the five high school athletic facilities. I'm here because I care about the inequities that have been ignored and forgotten since Stafford School Board voted in twenty thirteen to begin to install turf fields in the stadiums at the high schools. North Stafford and Colonial Forge have waited long enough to have turf stadiums. Spring has sprung. It's time to send a message that students at Forge and North are just as important as those at Brookpoint, Mountain View, and Stafford. We're not asking for a frivolous playground for kids to have fun. We are asking for an athletic facility that will allow our students to develop their talents and skills to a maximum. As Ms. Leisher said one time, "Turf fields are not a luxury, they are an expectation." Throughout my forty-six years in public education, I witnessed the ways that we have met challenging expectations in the classroom. We began with college prep courses for advanced students. Then, when that did not prepare our students enough, we started advanced placement courses. And that wasn't enough for academics, so we started the governor's school. And when the students needed another option for advancement, we added international baccalaureate programs. The same progress can be in athletics. Our high schools offer sixteen sports. The student athletes are not just playing for fun, they are there because they must maintain a grade point average, be competitive, and work hard to make the varsity team. Our scholar athletes have athletic and academic goals in hopes of earning college scholarships. We must consider these turf fields as an athletic advancement and improvement that can make just as much advancement as we have done in the academic advancements. Involvement in athletics helps students build character, leadership skills, time management strategies. They develop communication skills that they can't get from watching video games and text messaging. Athletics is the reason that some of the kids get out of bed in the morning to come to high school. Athletics in all five high schools need to be fair and equal opportunities. Tonight is your chance to vote for that parity issue. I believe the school, the board of supervisors will be behind you if you do vote for funding. We need your vote to install artificial turf at North and Colonial Forge this summer twenty-twenty-two. Every year we delay, the cost will go up. Now, thank you for serving Stafford County.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Taylor. My name is Carol Leisher, and I live in the George Washington District. I am here tonight to ask for your support to fix the parity issue of the stadium turf fields among our county high schools. I would not be fighting for turf fields at North Stafford and Colonial Forge High School if it was not about the parity issue. If all of the county high schools had grass stadiums, I would not be here advocating for artificial turf, even though it is the latest and greatest in our surrounding school systems. The issue is, three county high schools have it, and two schools don't. We have the haves, and we have the have-nots for the last eight years. Parity is defined as the state of condition of being equal, especially regarding status or position. Parity is ensuring the access to the same opportunities. Parity is level playing field. We just want the equivalent. There is no way to restore parity between a grass field and a turf field. For example, there is no way to restore parity between the North Stafford field hockey player on grass and the Mountain View field hockey player on turf. The latter will always be ahead by leaps and bounds with their stick skills on a smooth, fast surface. The point of parity is not for dominance or luxury, just equal footing. It feels like North Stafford and Colonial Forge grass stadiums are the opposite of parity. They are in a state of disparity, meaning lack of equity, which is not fair to our students in those two schools. Our school system has many needs due to aging facilities and exploding student population. Stafford schools have been dealing with parity issues every year as we modernize our older schools. That is why we rebuilt Stafford High School, added gyms to the elementary school, added larger libraries to our older elementary schools, and the needed CIP projects go on and on. The school board has a great opportunity to work with the board of supervisors to use unspent funds to fix this parity issue now. This possible teamwork between the school board and the board of supervisors makes it a win for parity in our high schools and parity for our student athletes. Please vote yes to award a future contract for synthetic turf fields for the North and Forge. And I just want to add, in my quest to find parity in the stadiums, I have come to believe that this school board and Dr. Taylor are on the right track to make Stafford County schools one of the very best. I fully support the priorities of the superintendent proposed budget of twenty-twenty-three. Thanks for all you do.
Ms. Hall, do you want to read the five following the next speaker?
Yes, ma'am. The next five speakers are Jason Frye, Angela Harding, Hannah Lutz, Courtney Setfin, and Michelle Stauffer.
My name is Kim Lewis, and I'm the athletic director and a teacher at Shirley High Middle School. I live in the Hartwood District. I'm here to talk about the third option for next year's schedule. This schedule has a middle school ending at four PM. We middle school teachers and coaches have the same concerns as the high school about ending the school day at four. Those concerns have been well documented, just not by middle school teachers and coaches because we did not know about this third option until it was presented at the March eighth board meeting. The one area that this schedule affects at the middle school level and not the elementary or high school levels is our athletic programs. Our athletic programs service is close to two thousand students across eight middle schools. That is approximately two hundred fifty students per middle school. An end time of four PM will present an extreme challenge to offer athletics for these students. The school dismissal, the school day dismissal at four to four-ten will cause practice times to start right around four-twenty to four-thirty. That will put the end of practice at six-twenty to six-thirty. Most, most athletes will not get home much before seven o'clock. Now they have to hopefully shower, eat dinner, and then do some homework. Leaves little time for their families. The day will be even longer on game days, with games starting at five if the games start on time, and completion of games between six and six-thirty, the traveling team will not get home till well after seven. We will be traveling to away games during rush hour traffic. Working at home, I know how impossible it is to get anywhere in a timely fashion during that time of day from our end of the county. Most games will not Most games will not be able to start at five because of the traffic in this area at the time we will be traveling to our games. With practice not starting until four-twenty, four-thirty, we will quickly run out of daylight. Five of the nine sports offered will be affected by this. Middle schools do not have lighted fields. Unless the district is willing to bus our athletes to a facility with lighted fields or put lights on all middle school fields, practices could be as short as thirty minutes, which is not enough time to teach the skills and strategies of the sport. Games will not be able to be played for the same reason of darkness unless the district, again, buses our athletes to fields with lights or puts lights on all middle school fields. Transportation is already concerned, and this would just add another layer of concern and cost. Having to travel to another site for practice and games would cause our athletes to get home even later than seven. The later end time will make it extremely hard to find coaches. Schools may find themselves in the position of having to hire coaches who are not teachers in the building, and this causes another set of problems. There will not be a contact person in the building for parents, students, teachers, and administrators when concerns arise about athletes' behavior and/or academic performance. We might have to also settle for a less qualified coach to meet our needs. In closing, I feel that the middle school has the potential to lose the most with option three. We have the potential of losing our entire athletic program, which would affect two thousand students. Neither the high schools nor elementary schools will lose this much ending at four. Please keep middle school in the middle. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Jason Frye. I'm a teacher and athletic director at Stafford Middle School. I'm here to address concerns for the student athletes at Stafford Middle School and adulting challenges we will face if Stafford County Public Schools votes to proceed with the third option for the 2022-2023 school year. This schedule proposes that the middle schools of Stafford County will dismiss at four P.M. Since learning about this third option at the March eighth, 2022, school board meeting, there has been great concern and apprehension amongst high school and middle school educators and coaches alike regarding the four P.M. dismissal time. I'd like to revert back to Stafford Middle School in particular. Stafford Middle School is the only middle school in Stafford County that does not have their own athletic fields aside from a softball field. Of the five outdoor athletic programs that are offered within Stafford County, middle school athletics, we rely on Brookpoint High School athletic facilities to allow our student athletes the opportunity to practice and compete for all but one of those sports, which is softball. Since we do not have our own athletic fields, we work closely with the athletic director at Brookpoint High School to ensure access to their facilities so that our student athletes can compete on their home field. The scheduling conflicts that we currently face as two schools sharing one athletic facility are extremely difficult. It takes many hours of planning and rearranging practice times and game schedules to accommodate the student athletes at both schools. If Stafford County Public Schools adopts option three for the 2022-2023 school year, it will be an immense disservice to the student athletes of Stafford Middle School. It saddens me to think about the negative impact that this decision will have on our student athlete population at Stafford Middle School. Simply due to the lack of facilities that we already deal with, along with a drastic change in the daily schedule, our student athletes will be put at a disadvantage. As mentioned by my colleagues who have addressed you already this evening, Stafford County Middle School's athletic program serve approximately two thousand students across our eight middle schools, which equates to approximately two hundred fifty students per middle school. An end time of four P.M. will present an extreme challenge to offer athletics and extracurricular activities for these students. In closing, it is proven that participating in a sport can help our students develop stronger friendships while also learning valuable life skills such as leadership and dedication. If our students choose to engage in athletics, I personally feel that as an educator and coach, that is my responsibility to do what I can to support, to support them and to help them get as much out of it as they can.
Good evening. My name is Angela Harding and I teach at Rodney Thompson Middle School and live in the George Washington District. I am here this evening to add a few other important viewpoints in support to reject the opt-in-three bell times, having middle school being released at four P.M. As my colleagues have outlined before me, there are many obstacles that a four o'clock release time would impose on the middle school athletic programs. I am currently the assigner for the Fredericksburg Area Officials Association, and I assign the field hockey officials for our eight county middle schools and sixteen other high schools in the surrounding area. According to the National Federation of High School Sports, fifty thousand officials across the United States did not return after the COVID break to their previous sports. This major official shortage is being felt within our Stafford County school athletic teams and will greatly affect the middle school athletic programs if option three is adopted. The middle school athletic schedule is driven by the availability of the officials. However, this year, the official assigners for football, field hockey, wrestling, and softball asked us to change our schedule so they would have officials available for the middle school games. If we did not make these changes, officials would not be available and games would have to be canceled. This is due to the fact that high school contests are the first priority for official assignments. As Mrs. Lewis stated before me, currently, middle school athletic contests start at four and end around five. This allows officials to officiate middle school contests and then officiate a high school game after, as high school contests start at later times. The option three, four o'clock dismissal time for middle school, would not allow for officials to officiate both the middle school and high school games. Middle school games would not start until five and end around six, which then does not allow time for officials to get to a high school contest. With this combination of the official shortage and the high school athletics as first priority, middle school would suffer the consequences and not get the official coverage due to the four o'clock release time. Another issue with the four o'clock release time is that it will affect Stafford County Parks and Rec. The Parks and Rec athletic programs rely on the use of several middle schools for their practices and games. If middle schools cannot start the athletic games until five, that will push the Parks and Rec programs to later start times, and therefore, those that participate in the Parks and Rec programs will get home at a later time. This may not be suitable for many families and in turn could decrease participation in these programs and possibly eliminate some sort, some of the support options for the younger population. Lastly, to all of you elementary school parents that are pushing for the earlier start time, before you know it, your child will be a middle schooler and then a high school student. How are you going to feel when your sixteen-year-old, year-old high schooler has to drive home from a practice or a game at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night because the high school was dismissed at four o'clock? We need to go back to the pre-COVID time schedule for all schools. I hope these points have given you more information to help you in your decision to vote against option three and vote in favor of option one that Dr. Taylor has suggested to the school board. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Taylor. My name is Hannah Lutz and I'm a third grade teacher at Moncur Elementary. As I'm sure you are aware, this proud squeaky wheel has been here twice to speak in favor of elementary school continuing to have the earliest start time for the upcoming school year. You've heard many presentations from me and my colleagues sharing countless research and data as to why this is the best choice for our students. You've also heard from high school students and teachers that would prefer the earliest start time. It was mentioned at the last board meeting that many high school students wrote in digital comments as well. While I find this commendable, I also want to point out that I'm here to speak for my elementary students because they cannot do so themselves. I am here to be their voice today. We all know that a good debate not only involves arguing for your position, but arguing against the opposing side. In hearing from high school students and teachers, you've heard the following arguments against the latest start time. It is not the best for sports and extracurriculars. It is hard for high school students with jobs, and it is not preparing them for the real world. So, I'd like to take a moment to refute those three arguments. Firstly, extracurricular activities and sports. We're all aware, these are an important part of a high school student's journey. However, as the schedule stands, those students have plenty of time to be up in the morning to participate in these activities before school starts. If students choose to participate in multiple extracurriculars, then they may need to attend activities before and after school. However, this is a choice that they make, and they must learn to balance their schedule accordingly. Ultimately, these activities are not part of the school day and are not part of instruction, which is our primary focus of attending school. Next, students with jobs. I understand many students need to have jobs in high school to either save for college or to help provide for their families. However, getting out of school at four still gives students plenty of time to make it to work for a five-to-nine shift. And for many jobs, that's the time that the most employees are needed as people commute home from work. Lastly, preparing them for the real world. In my opinion, this is the least realistic of the three arguments. The majority of the working world is no longer a nine-to-five environment. All of my peers outside of teaching work at jobs with completely irregular schedules, including early morning opening shifts and late night closing shifts. Many work on weekends, on holidays. Some of my peers work from home and make their own schedules. And no existing school schedule is going to prepare high schoolers for those work environments. Therefore, as you make your very important decision tonight, please take into consideration what is best for the mental health, well-being, and most importantly, instruction of our students. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. You're just people. You're important people, but you're people. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Setfin and I am the office manager at Moncur Elementary. And bell schedule again. I support elementary continuing with the first shift. I'm coming from the perspective of an elementary employee and an elementary parent who commutes. We have a large portion of county employees who also commute from surrounding areas. And I know that you're trying to recruit more, which elementary desperately needs. Trust me, I do enrollment. So, right now, I average thirty minutes to get into work and about an hour to get home. This is with my hours being seven to three fifteen. If it takes an hour to get home, we're all familiar with ninety-five, it's going to more than double. So, my issue is, not necessarily with me, it's fine, I like my quiet time in the car, but my children will only have twenty minutes of recess at school, which is pretty standard, and an estimated home arrival time, if we do do the proposed bell schedule, probably about six o'clock. And we would have no downtime, either of us. So, like most younger elementary students, bedtime is between seven-thirty and eight, and we have to also squeeze in homework, bath, and dinner. And I cannot speak for other parents, but I actually like to spend time with my kids and hang out with them a little bit and not shotgun the whole evening, but that's just me. So, and I know high schoolers have heavily mentioned sports. Well, I have two very athletic boys, and they have practiced three nights a week. Now, they're only six and nine, but to them, that's the world, and it also helps with social progression. So, it's both, both important. I support high school, but I also support elementary. And just because it's not affiliated with the school doesn't mean it's not important. So, let's see. Elementary has the most schools in the county, the most students in the county, and by default, has always gone last. Something that no one's taken into account is that elementary schools get returned students because unlike middle and high, anyone under second grade has to have an adult get them off the bus. Let me tell you, we get returned students year after year after year after year. So, you can only imagine having a later schedule. I, they're slated to get home at a certain time. Right now, you can imagine if there's any delayed buses, which I know we're shooting not to have any delayed buses, but, you know, realism. So, anyways, my thinking is that if this is going to be a super efficient proposed bell schedule, you know, trying to alleviate the bus situation, then it shouldn't be a problem if elementary goes first. After all, education starts there, right? In closing, I sincerely thank you for all you do, and I really hope you consider what I have said. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next five names are Lori May, Teresa Burden, Adam Cotton, Ezra Jackson, and Alicia Rodriguez.
Good evening, board and Dr. Taylor. My name is Michelle Stauffer and I reside in the Rock Hill District. I am also the primary support teacher at Moncur. I'm here to speak in support of an early start for elementary. When asked if I was going to speak again, I said yes without hesitation. I explained that I look at tonight as the final rose ceremony for the bachelor to bachelorette. And although, although none of you have traveled to exotic places throughout your decision-making process, it doesn't make your decision any less important. Also, like the bachelor to bachelorette, someone is going to leave tonight unhappy with the decision. As a special education teacher, a student's individual education plan drives my targeted instruction. So, tonight, I want to leave you with a goal written specifically for you. By March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, when given data to support an early start for elementary and a later start for middle and high, SCPS School Board will vote at least four out of seven to put elementary in the first tier and second tier of the bell schedule as measured by observation and data collection. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration throughout this difficult process and respect the decision that you ultimately make. Thank you.
Wow. Talk about a hard act to follow. Good evening, school board members. I'm Lori May. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Conway Elementary, and I too have spoken a few times. Tonight, I just want to remind you that we're all here, whatever level we're at, looking out for the best interest of not just elementary students or middle school students or high school students, but all of the students. And the decision you're going to make tonight is going to impact every single Stafford County public school student, every Stafford County public school employee, and most of the families that reside within Stafford County. So, it's a big decision that is on your all shoulders, and I understand how big it is. I really do. And we've heard lots of arguments. But there again, the past two weeks, we have not heard the argument for academics. We've heard for tutoring. We've heard for sports. We've heard for jobs. We've heard for college prep, for work prep. But we have not heard middle and high school talk about the academic day. Elementary has talked about the academic day, what's best for them. We have talked about the daycare and that our kids are at daycare if we start at nine-thirty, sometimes at six o'clock in the morning, half a school day before the school day starts, breakfast at nine. That's tough. And then home, four-thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon. Where's there time for playing in the winter? Where's there time for after-school sports, extracurriculars, tutoring? We have many teachers at Conway that tutor their kids after school. Kids won't be ready to do that at four o'clock in the afternoon at the elementary level. We are very passionate people. That's why we're in this job. You guys up there, us back here, all of us, we're very passionate. We do what we do because we love children. But we want to make sure we're making the best decision we can for children. And I know you've heard all the arguments and you've read my emails, and many of you have responded to my emails, and I truly appreciate it knowing how many you've got. But we have to put our best foot forward, and we have to do what's right for kids. Change is hard. It really is. A COVID year is not the year to say the schedule this year didn't work. There's too many things to take into account. It's going to take two years, possibly, no matter what schedule you go with, to work all the kinks out after COVID. We all have to be ready for change. We all have to commit to do our best. And even though most of us would like to see a seven-thirty start time for our elementary kids, we would be happy even with the eight-thirty start time. The nine-thirty start time is just going to be too hard to be teaching, reading, writing, and math to six, five, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-old students. So, please, put a little bit of the early and early childhood education for us with whatever decision you make tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Burden, and I'm a proud elementary school teacher at Conway Elementary, and I'm here to talk to you about the bell schedule. And I'm just gonna, to me, it's kind of a simple question. We're all here to support our children, and the main thing is instruction. That's what we're all here for. That's why you're on the board. You are elected to, to provide high-quality instruction to all children of Stafford County. Or students. I teach children. So, I just wanted to say that when you make this decision, first and foremost, it needs to be through the lens of good instruction. And I'm going to tell you, there are many components to that. It's me studying. It's me being on my game every day. It's best practices. But the main component and the most important component is when that instruction is delivered to children. And all the research, over time, we just didn't do it over the last two years. All the research we've sent you is the research and the data that's been collected over time. And young children learn best in the morning, and so I urge you to make that decision. I don't envy you making this decision, but please think about our young children. And think about it like this. I hear a lot about tutoring time. Well, if we provide a great foundation to our children, and it has to happen... and it has to happen in the early years, because, you know, it's hard to backfill if they miss, and they just keep getting further and further behind. But if we have the opportunity to give a very strong foundation in elementary school, our high schoolers won't need tutoring programs. So, so that's what it is. Do you want a house built on cards or a nice, strong foundation? That's what you're really voting on. So I just urge you as wonderful School Board members that survey children to please make the right decision tonight. Thank you.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Adam Cotton. I teach at Colonial Forge High School. Since I keep hearing that no one wants to touch on academics in high school, I will. The fact of the matter is this, I'm tired throughout the day. There's a reason the coffee is always full in every planning area in the building. My elementary school kids, they're five now, are tired at the end of the day, at four o'clock. They're excited to see me, once you get in the truck, out like a light, every day. My middle schooler, tired at the end of the day. So now that that is all equal, what is the one thing that separates high school from elementary? And that's academic workload. Plain and simple. You've got high school kids studying for AP exams, ACTs, SATs, honors courses, CGS, the junior year-long presentation that they have to do. Oh, let's not forget boyfriends, girlfriends. Let's not forget having to take care of siblings, jobs. I'm not going to touch on that because it's already been touched on. The point is, when my daughter was at Winding Creek, and I'm not, this may have been just her, I don't know, she would have been home one math worksheet a week, if that, for homework. I have kids now that get out at three-thirty-five that are up until one and two in the morning doing academic work. Plain and simple. I mean, look, I have the utmost respect for elementary school teachers. Without their foundation, my kids don't raise their hand to go to the bathroom. My kids don't ask questions. My kids are unruly, they are undisciplined, and they just, it is chaos. So elementary school teachers set the foundation that we build the house on, and I thank them for that. But, we all talk about getting back to normal post-COVID. Guess what was pre-COVID? High school first, elementary second. I'm sorry, middle school second, elementary last. Get back to normal. We've taken the mask away. Great. You know, we're slowly getting back to normal. Let's get all the way back to normal, because the high school kids have more on their plate, not just socially, not just in life, but academically. Because then they have to worry about, well, did I get into UVA? Did I get into James Monroe? Did I get into Virginia Tech? There's so much stress on, I have kids come to me all the time just to vent in the mornings, before school. Like, where'd you go with spring? I went and visited UVA. Oh, how was that? Oh, it was great, I hope I get in. That's a stress on them. Elementary kids don't have to deal with that. And I get it, it's just a matter of fact of their age. And, you know, that's just, the way life is for high school students is so stressful for them. What do I wear? Am I wearing the right clothes? Do I have my hairstyle the right way? Like, it's so stressful for them. Everyone I've talked to has asked for the early morning start. Every single student I have talked to, not one, has asked for the late start. So, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as Mr. Jackson comes forward, I'll call the next five names. Alicia Rodriguez, John Brown, Jerome Wilson, Berta Rios, and Ciappa Romero, and Edwin Toheos.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Taylor. My name is Ezra Jackson. I'm a junior at Colonial Forge High School. I'd first like to address a claim that was made earlier. So, a teacher said that they were here to advocate for the students. However, the teachers aren't the advocates for the students, the parents are. I don't see them. All right, that's, that was just my little aside. All right. So I'm part of many different clubs and societies that Colonial Forge offers. Unfortunately, I, my clubs get out at five, five-thirty, and then my next round starts at six, six-thirty. That doesn't leave a lot of time for homework. I've pulled, I've pulled nights where I'm up till one, two AM, taking notes for AP classes. This weekend, I have my SAT, you know, all things that elementary school kids don't need to worry about. You'll hear plenty of studies cited tonight, but they only focus on academics, not on athletics, jobs, and extracurriculars that affect students. Elementary school students don't have to worry about job applications, resumes, or don't have to worry about college applications, resumes, or jobs after school. I do. Elementary school students don't need to worry about tutoring after school. If we want to talk about academics, they don't have to worry about tutoring after school. I have many teachers who work six to eight hours a week after school just to make sure that their students can catch up, because it's a lot harder to catch up on high school work than it is elementary work. You miss one class in high school, you're spending a week trying to figure it out, because the teacher doesn't have the time to just sit there and reteach it to you while everybody else is moving on. My school used to have activity buses that ran every day after school. This year, my school hasn't been able to run those buses. This means my friends aren't able to go to extracurricular activities because they don't have transportation. Doesn't seem very equitable to me. While looking at the placement of high schools in the county, I found that two are on Courthouse Road, one is on Garrisonville Road, and one is on Mountain View Road. These are all very major roads to Stafford, and when compounded on normal rush-hour traffic from three-thirty to five, it puts a lot, it puts a lot of students in potentially dangerous situations as many of them are new drivers. Lastly, the parents, the parents, students, and staff were polled, and the results were very clear. Everyone would like high school to go earliest, except for the elementary school teachers. That leaves it up to you. Do you vote for the majority, or do you, or do you vote for the minority at the expense of the majority? In conclusion, I ask you all to vote with a superintendent's recommendation, vote for the students, and vote for an earlier high school start time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to change pace a little bit here and talk about redistricting. My name is Alicia Rodriguez, and I live in the Belmont Hills Ingleside neighborhood. I debated coming again tonight because I've spoken to you all before, but I have to try to represent our little neighborhood. Three out of four of our children currently attend Conway Elementary, and at the last redistricting in two thousand nineteen, we were moved from Ferry Farm to Conway. We are now faced with the possibility of being moved back to Ferry Farm. I'm here to again ask you to not redistrict any neighborhood for the second consecutive time. I've already told you all how difficult the last redistricting was on our family and how another move followed, following the unpredictable atmosphere that COVID created would be devastating to our neighborhood. And while I have no doubt that our kids will adjust, as they often do, research has shown that moving schools frequently, particularly in the elementary years, has long-lasting effects. According to the American Journal of Education, frequent moves can account for poor academic performance, behavior problems, depression, and disruptions to peer relationships. The negative impacts of repeated school relocation are so pronounced that studies suggest entire school districts with high student mobility can expect to have lower high school graduation rates. These results alone are alarming, but added on top of all that these students have had to endure the last two years, it's just too much transition. I realize that we can't always avoid redistricting, but moving a neighborhood for the second time seems like something we can control. While moving our tiny community of only thirteen students will not have a significant effect on the overcrowding issue at Conway, it could have severe effects on these children. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is John Brown. I'm a resident in the acquired district, a teacher and a football coach at Colonial Forge High School. Madam Chair and members of the Board, I'm here this evening because I strongly support and urge you to adopt the bell schedule presented to the Board on February eighth and keep high school students on the first shift. The presented schedule is based on the data gathered and the recommendation of the superintendent, who is certainly an expert in his field. As you know, nearly ten thousand parents responded to the survey regarding preferred bell schedules and school start times, and the results showed that the majority of parents want high school students to attend school on the first shift, starting at seven-thirty AM, and then they get two PM. One of the reasons parents selected the earlier timeframe was to allow students time to participate in extracurricular activities. As a high school teacher, a coach, and most importantly, a parent of a high school student, I can tell you firsthand the importance and impact of extracurricular activities. Extracurricular activities are an extension of the classroom and an extension of instruction. Many studies have shown that students benefit from many lifelong lessons learned through participation in sports and clubs. A national, the National Center for Education Statistics article stated that extracurricular activities provide a channel for reinforcing the lessons learned in the classroom, offering students the opportunity to apply academic skills in real-world contexts and are thus considered part of a well-rounded education. Recent research suggests that participation in extracurricular activities may increase students' sense of engagement or attachment to their school and thereby decrease the likelihood of school failure and dropping out. I think we can all agree that after two long years of the pandemic, anything we can do to help our children and students feel engaged and connected with others is important in supporting them, not only in their academic endeavors, but with their mental health and social connections and preparing them for success later in life. There is very real possibility that if high school doesn't end until four PM, then we'll lose many students, including those who benefit from the time at school with others the most, as well as sponsors and coaches who want to participate in extracurricular activities after school, but simply can't because of the late hours. As a parent of a high school student who participates in multiple extracurricular activities, I would like you to understand the undue stress that a later school end time will put on families. Getting home later means eating later, means staying up late to do homework, which means less time together as a family. It means cramming chores and necessary items to get ready for the next day in the fewer and later hours in the evening. There isn't downtime, and psychologically, that's a long day. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I know your job as a School Board member is not an easy one, and I know you can't make everyone happy. As a parent, a teacher, and a resident, I appreciate you performing such an important role in our community. I also know that you want to do what's best for our children. Therefore, I strongly encourage you to adopt a bell schedule with high school being in the first shift. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Wilson. I am nobody but a father. It's, it's amazing just when I step outside and say it's amazing to see this building because this was my library, so to see.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Mine too.
Yeah, there we go. You did a great job. I wish I was here for a happier thing. Unfortunately, I'm standing here for my daughter. She's a junior at Brookpoint. She suffered some, it's a criminal matter, so I can't get too deep, but some abusive situations from a male student. For me, I'm up here because I realize I failed. I realize that I didn't see it. You know, never in a million years would you think your daughter would be abused or hurt by another person, and you think you have the skills and the resources to be able to recognize it. But I didn't. And so, I told her the other day that I've struggled, but I would never fail her again in this way. If it wasn't for my wife and her, my daughter's relationship, we would never even found out. And together, you know, my wife and daughter had stopped what could have gotten really bad. So I'm up here just offering my services. In my previous life, before I made a decision to get punched in the face and own MMA gym, because I get punched every day, that's what I do. I used to work as a community intervention specialist, a counselor, parole and probation sites, lead fatherhood initiative. I worked for these to you. If my wife was standing here, she wouldn't want me to tell you. He even wrote a book, but I only get like five or twelve bucks a year, so it's not even really that big of a deal. I know healthy relationships are a problem in our high schools and our middle schools. I, I know it's a touchy subject, because when you involve sex and sexuality in relationships, I know it gets uneasy, but it's something that has to be dealt with and has to be addressed. I mean, some statistics say it's out. One in three young people will be, suffer from intimate partner violence. And just having it on the website and just bringing people in is just not enough. At some point in time, we have to be able to sit and talk about recognizing signs of violence. My daughter didn't have the skills she needed to recognize it, and that's partly my fault. And I have to admit that. But I would never want another young girl or young boy to suffer what she had to suffer. So again, my mom spoke to you, Ms. Guy, so I, I know she's a special person, my mom. So, I already know. So I'll make sure to give you my contact, but I really want to help you all because I know it's a problem in the schools. I did it for a living in my previous life. I don't know how we can make it work, but I know if it happens to my daughter, it's happening to more people. And so just, I'll make sure I get in touch with you, but please be open to considering talking about healthy relationships, not just in health class, not just in, you know, in your family life classes, but in general. Thank you very much. Take care.
Buenas noches, Presidente de la Junta Escolar de Stafford. Señores y señoras de la Junta Escolar, Dr. Thomas Taylor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Dr. Taylor.
Mi nombre es Berta Rios, y he vivido en Stafford por dieciséis años.
My name is Berta Rios, and I've lived in Stafford for sixteen years.
Me he desempeñado como custodian en las escuelas de Stafford County por cinco años en la compañía ABM.
I have worked for Stafford County for sixteen years and for ABM for five years.
Aparte de mujer trabajadora, vengo a expresarme como madre y abuela.
Besides as a working woman, I'm coming to express myself as a grandmother and, como abuela y qué?
Como madre y abuela.
As a mother and as a grandmother.
Aunque hay muchísimos temas a los que quisiera referirme, en este momento prefiero es- explayarme en la limpieza de verano.
Even though there's a lot of things that I would like to bring to you, what I would like to talk about is about summer cleaning.
Donde tenemos que hacer una limpieza minuciosa de cada uno de los espacios de las escuelas para que nuestros niños regresen a clases.
Where we have to spend a lot of time doing very careful cleaning before our students can come to, back to the classroom.
Para que cuando regresen a clases, los ambientes estén en ideal de higiene más aún en plena pandemia.
So that when they get back to school, every single item on the schools are, the environment is clean, especially now under the pandemic.
Pero lo que sucede es que esta labor se nos dificulta ya que en muchas oportunidades no tenemos el personal.
But what happens is that this is very difficult for us because many times we do not have the personnel.
La maquinaria.
The machinery.
Ni el material necesario para desempeñar dicha labor.
Nor the necessary materials to carry out our labor.
Perdiendo así mucho tiempo.
We lose a lot of time this way.
Y luego enfrentarnos a los malos tratos de nuestros superiores.
And then we also end up facing the mistreatment of our supervisors.
Por no haber hecho lo que se suponía tendríamos que haber hecho.
For not having done what we were supposed to have done.
Es por eso que estoy aquí.
That is why I'm here.
Para que por primera vez en muchísimo tiempo.
So that for the first time in a very long time.
Nuestra voz sea escuchada.
Our voice is heard.
Y esperamos.
And we hope.
Lograr mejores condiciones de trabajo.
To achieve better working conditions.
Un sueldo justo.
A fair salary.
Acorde a las épocas en que estamos viviendo.
According to the times that we're living.
Y por sobre todas las cosas.
And above all.
Un trato digno.
A dignified treatment.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Y que Dios lo bendiga por esta oportunidad.
And may God bless you for this opportunity.
Would she like to submit those comments for the record? She could give them to the clerk, or we could copy them and give them back? Just wanted to note for the Board members, I think they're talking about the contract cleaner that we employ. It's Stafford County Public Schools.
About ABM, yeah.
Trabajo para la compañía ABM Valio.
My name is Suraya Romero. I work for ABM, the company ABM.
En la escuela que yo trabajo es en el turno de la noche, Falmouth Elementary.
I work at Falmouth Elementary in the nighttime shift, sorry.
Y estamos aquí unos pocos compañeros para que, por favor, nos ayuden a que...
Y estamos aquí unos pocos compañeros para que, por favor, nos ayuden a que en todo el laboral y también para que nos incrementen el salario también porque yo ya tengo cinco años de estar en la compañía. Okay, and we're here, there's many of us here with my other workers, and we're here for looking at solutions for our problem in what it comes to the work that we do, but also in the salaries that we receive, because it's been a long time since I've been working for the company. Sí, ya tengo cinco años en la compañía y siento que el salario es muy injusto. I've been working for the company for five years, and the salary that we receive is not fair. Aprecio su atención y ojalá nos puedan ayudar. I appreciate your attention for this matter, and we hope you can help us. Gracias. Let me call the next five names if I can. All right. Yesenia Diaz, Fabiola Sosa, Carmen Canales, Elsie Bernal, and Ricardo Ventura.
Buenas noches, señores de la junta escolar de Stafford. Señor Superintendent, Dr. Tomas Taylor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and Dr. Taylor, Superintendent Dr. Taylor. Mi nombre es Edwin Tercios. Ha trabajado para ABM 16 años en la escuela que he sido custodia y supervisor de varias escuelas del condado de Stafford. My name is Edwin Torres. I have worked, oh, Torres, perdón, and I have worked for ABM for 16 years in many different schools as a custodian, as a supervisor of many schools in here in Stafford. Considero que he sido un empleado elemental para ABM, ya que debido a mi experiencia y conocimiento en el trabajo. I have been a key employee for ABM because of my knowledge of the work. Ha ayudado una manera ardua día y noche a sacar el trabajo de varias escuelas debido al poco personal con que sea cuenta. Estoy aquí haciendo... My job, my experience has been key to, I don't have my glasses. Thank you. Okay, my job has been key to ABM. I have worked in very, very many, in many different ways in the day and night to helping the schools because there is very few personnel that is there. Que se cuentas, estoy aquí haciendo, escuchar mi voz porque me siento exhausto debido al sexo de trabajo. I am here to make my voice heard because I am exhausted from the, from working too much, the excessive amount of work. En el cual me siento decepcionado al salario viejo, bajo, y el trato que nos han dado. Es por eso que al igual que mis compañeros, exijo un trato digno y salarios justos, beneficios y equipo de limpieza. I am very disillusioned with the salary, the treatment that we receive, and that is why, just like my coworkers, we are, exigiendo, we are demanding to be treated with dignity, to receive a salary that is just, to receive benefits, and the appropriate cleaning supplies. Adequado, muchas gracias por su atención y por el apoyo que nos puedan brindar. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter and for any support that you can give us.
Buenas noches, señores y señoras de la junta escolar de Stafford. Señor Superintendent, Dr. Thomas Taylor.
Good evening and ladies and gentlemen of the, the school board, of Stafford School Board.
Could you speak into the mic so we can hear better? You can pull it down.
Mi nombre es Yesenia Diaz. Tengo 18 años de vivir en el condado de Stafford. He trabajado para ABM por ocho años. My name is Yesenia, Yesenia Diaz. I had been living in Stafford for 18 years, and I had worked for ABM for eight years. Como custodian and supervisor of many schools. Durante cuatro años fui supervisor of Rock Hill Elementary School. For four years I was supervisor of Rocky Hills Elementary School. Considero que fui una supervisora muy entregada y comprometida con mi trabajo. I consider that I was a good supervisor, very... Dedicated. Dedicated, and, and involved with my job. En el cual mi mayor preocupación era el bienestar y seguridad de nuestros niños, maestros, staff de la escuela. In which my main... My major preoccupy, worry was focused on the well-being of the kids, teachers, and staff of the school. Hasta el último agosto donde mi manager me mandó ayudar a otra escuela. Until last August when my manager sent me to work to other schools, to help other schools. A la cual yo me negué por sus faltas de respeto, su voz resonante y autoritaria hacia, hacia mi persona. For which I, I refused because of his loud voice, an authoritative voice toward me. Ocasionando así que perdiera mi puesto en esa escuela. Which caused that I lost my job at that school. Sacándome del sistema, provocando así que yo no pudiera recibir mi sueldo esa quincena. When he took me out of the system, which, which made that I, I would, I did not receive salary for two weeks. En lugar de un cheque, recibí tres gift card por parte de ABM. Instead of my check, I got a three gift card from ABM. Es por eso que vengo aquí para que mi voz sea escuchada. That's why I'm here, so my voice can be here. Por medio de la de ustedes. Through your voices. Exigiendo así un trato digno, un salario justo. Demanding a... A, a, a just treatment, a good salary, and... Un trato justo. And a fairness in the job. Y seguridad laboral. And work security. Ya que antes y durante la pandemia no la hemos tenido. Because before and after the pandemic, we had, we haven't had. Poniendo así en riesgo nuestra salud. Putting our health in risk. La de nuestras familias y las demás personas. Our families' health and other people. Agradezco haber sido escuchada, y de antemano, gracias por la ayuda que nos puedan brindar. I'm very thankful for listening, and thank you for any help that you may bring. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Good evening. Soy Fabiola Sosa. Fabiola Sosa. I am Fabiola Sosa. Vivo en Stafford cuatro años. I had lived in Stafford for four years. Tengo mis hijos que van al colegio de Stafford. I had kids that go to Stafford schools. Hablo como mamá y trabajadora de ABM. I am talking as a mother and as a worker for ABM. Cuando estaba en mi casa, creía que mi hija estaba en un colegio seguro. When I was home, I thought that my daughter was in a secure school. Desde el año pasado que empecé a trabajar con ABM, no es correcto. Since last year, when I started working for ABM, working for ABM is not secure. Necesitamos más personal, necesitamos que se nos escuche. We need more personnel, and we need to be here. También quiero hablarles de el trato que necesitamos, más material, como dijeron mis compañeros, y que nos hacen trabajar en snow day, cuando es los días de snow day, nosotros tenemos que ir a remover la... Trabajamos... Trabajando. Remolamos nieve sin el adecuado material. We are working without the appropriate material or equipment, and they make us come to work in a snow days. To remove the ice outside. To remove the ice. I'm sorry, because I need more, the better explanation, you know, for understanding me, because I am here with old people, because that is not fair, this is not good, okay? Because old children, every day, need the school cleaning. Me staying home, my partner only is one for all the school, okay? That is not okay, this is not good. What happened with ABM? What happened to money? Huh? Me is $11 for order, other people $12 for order, no benefits, no vacation, no, last, last week, last week is vacation for children and the teacher, but what happened with me, with my partners? That is not good. Me and my, 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 my group, because I need help, please, please, it's my, my, my children, all children stay in the school, what happened? When you come in the school, say, last day, tomorrow coming, and the principal superintendent, you cleaning more, more, it's only me. Please, what happened when, when the payment, what happened when me stay in the school, my daughter in my house, call, tomorrow, please come in the school because you, your partner no, no working? Why? Me, I love the kids, I, I love Rock Hill, I love Elementary because my daughter is studying for elementary, Rock Hill. When me started in, in this ABM, say, I love Rock Hill, I want to Rock Hill, because for, for the support of my children, I need going to the cleanup, because two people for all the school, that is not okay. Every day, I don't know how much the school for Stafford because it's not okay, two people. The high school, what happened in high school is four, four people for high school. I'm so sorry for this because I need, we need help, please, please, thank you so much.
Buenas noches, junta escolar de Stafford. Good evening, school board. Señores y señoras, Superintendent, agradecemos la oportunidad que nos están dando todos nuestros compañeros. And Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity of being here. Voy a recalcar nuevamente lo que nuestras compañeras dijeron. I'm going to support what my... Trabajo en, por la mañana. What my people said, I work in the morning. Corro toda la escuela todo el día. I run the whole thing the whole day. I start to disinfect. The kids arrive, and I do not have time to do anything because I'm alone. I have to disinfect everything from doors, the entrances, the bathrooms, they called me because there's an accident in the bathroom, or in any of the room, or in the hallway, everything's an emergency, all of it, because I can't go to any of it. I can go to one, and then the other one, then lunchtime comes, I'm throwing the garbage, I'm cleaning the floor because they threw stuff down. I do not have children in the school, but I love the school, the kids, I love working with them, because they work in the morning and they help her. In December, they gave me a lot of gifts from the parents, gift cards. For the 14th of February, they also gave me. I do not have kids, but I love the job. We do the job, we do the job, you know, as well as we can, but the money is very little. If we had more help, the cleaning will be better and the security of all the kids will be much better if there were more staff. The bosses, our bosses say that we do not need help, that with one person, the whole school can be. Yes, we do it, but not in the conditions that it should be. I want you to be aware of everything that we're going through. In spring break, they do not, they do not pay. If we go to work, we get paid, but if we don't, we don't get paid. When it's the cold time out. We do not have the correct equipment, or even the clothing, the sweaters, when I have to go out and throw out the trash. So we're here because we need help. We want better salary, that the amount of work that we have to do, hopefully another person to come and help me during the day. We want paid holidays and the snow. In January, there was a whole week that we, schools were closed, so we didn't work. They paid us two or maybe three days, I don't remember. So we want benefits, and we want the salary, and the schools are still going to be as they are right now, we're still gonna clean them with all the love that we're, that we have been doing. Thank you.
Buenas noches, presidente de la junta escolar de Stafford. Señores y señoras de la junta escolar, señor Superintendent. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam President, members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent. Con todo respeto, venimos ante ustedes. With all respect, we come before you. A exponer nuestra situación que estamos viviendo. To explain the situation that we're living. Como empleados de ABM. As employee of ABM. Mi nombre es Elsie Bernal. My name is Elsie Bernal. Soy supervisora de AG Bright Middle School. I am the supervisor at AG Bright Middle School. Nosotros hemos estado al frente de la pandemia del COVID-19. We have been at the forefront of the pandemic of COVID-19. Hemos trabajado duro. We have worked really hard. Nos hemos arriesgado. We have put ourselves at risk. Pero lo hemos hecho por, por el bien de nuestros niños y por el bien de nuestros maestros. But we have done that for the welfare of our students and the welfare of our teachers. Pero nuestros jefes, nuestra compañía ABM, no valora nuestro esfuerzo. But our company, our company of ABM does not value our efforts. No quieren darnos un salario digno. They do not want to pay us a fair wages. No quieren darnos todo el material que necesitamos. They do not want to give us the correct equipment that we need. Para mantener limpia y equipada nuestra escuela. Sorry, the correct equipment that we need to keep our schools clean and safe. Gracias por su atención. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Madam Chair, I'll call the next five names now. Blanca Smith. Antonio Ortiz, no, no, Blanca.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Blanca Smith.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Blanca Smith, gracias a todos por darle el... No, no se importa quién, si tiene su nombre, está bien.
Que es las...
Muy buenas noches, señores, gracias de honor, sé que no les el nombre de ustedes, pensé que hay superintendente y hay, hay doctoras, no sé qué personas hay, pero gracias por escucharnos y ustedes.
Good evening, I'm not sure who is who, but I know there is the superintendent and, and all of you ladies. Thank you for listening.
Yo soy otra persona más, mi nombre es Ricardo Ventura.
I, I'm another person, my name is Ricardo Ventura.
Trabajo para YCA, o sea, ADM.
I work for ABM.
Trabajamos con mucho amor y mucho cariño para lo que es la compañía y para hacer la limpieza de la escuela.
Uh, we work, uh, in a, with love and, and care just for the company and for the schools.
Pero a veces nos damos cuenta de que no se lo valor el trabajo y además también este, el trato que recibimos no es muy bueno.
But, uh, but we know that they don't value our, our work and the, the way they, they treat us is not good.
Y para, para comenzar pues el sueldo que recibimos es un sueldo muy bajo.
The salary that, to, to begin with, the salary that we get is very low salary.
Lo mínimo que, que pudiéramos ganar son, son quince dólares.
The minimum that we could make is fifteen dollars.
Porque con la inflación que hay de los precios hoy, los combustibles, los, los canastas básicas y todo que se ha ido arriba y nosotros con ese poquito sueldo, no, no, no es justo y el trabajo es demasiado, lo dan un trabajo demasiado.
With the, with the inflation and the cost of things and the fuel and the salary that we get is not enough and the work is a lot.
También que este, queremos este, pues que se nos escuche, o sea que se nos escuchen y, y puedan hacer algo de nosotros porque hemos vivido este... Yo tengo este siete años de trabajar y hasta ahora me acerco a, a, a personas que los pueden escuchar y que también pueden este ayudarnos en ese, en ese aspecto.
Uh, so we hope that, that, that you listen to us and, and can help us, because in seven years that I had been working for the company, this is the first time that I come to look for help.
Al igual que los demás compañeros, pues nosotros trabajamos con mucho, con mucho cariño, con mucho amor ustedes. Porque queremos hacerles una, una buena limpieza a lo que es las escuelas para que los niños estén muy, muy bien y los maestros también.
The, the same as my coworkers, um, we, we, we work with love and we want the, the kids and the teachers to be safe.
¿Y qué dijo al final? Para que los, los profesores estén muy cómodos con lo que es la limpieza.
So they, they, we can do a good job for them.
Pero queremos que se nos reconozca por lo menos este, el salario mínimo, el sueldo que sea más, más alto.
But, uh, we, we want that at least they, they recognize that we deserve a better salary, uh, not a low salary, as it is.
También queremos de que, de que las escuelas tengan, tengan el personal, ajusten el personal, porque a mí me toca, al igual que el compañero Elba, el que pasó, señor, me toca, me toca hacer dos turnos, me toca, me toca trabajar dieciséis horas.
That we also need more, more staff, because like my other coworker, I work two turns, sixteen hours.
Así que...
To chief.
Los sentimos cansados y a veces los manan porque falta, falta personal en, en otras escuelas.
We are tired, and, but they, they send us to other schools because they don't have the staff.
Así que, muchísimas gracias por escucharlos y esperamos de que haya una respuesta segura.
Thank you so much for listening and we hope to, that there will be an answer.
Bueno, después de Blanca, hay Antonia Ortiz, Melody Reyna, y... Melody, ¿está bien?
Okay, mi nombre es Blanca Smith, buenas noches a todos, a doctor... Él ya me conoce. Ay, tengo seis años de trabajar aquí en el Bandy. He sido muy feliz aquí, toda la gente me quiere. Ajá, pero pienso también lo mismo, que el pago no es justo y, y para la pandemia igual ellos lo esforzaron a mucho trabajo, nosotros y nunca lo reconocieron con nada.
But I also agree with everybody else, the pay is not enough and especially during the pandemic, the type of work that we had to do, it was never recognized or remunerated.
En el building no había nada de gente el año pasado para todo el año de la pandemia y los jefes me dijeron, ay, que gente uno tú tienes que estar ahí porque si no no se te va a pagar.
And even though there were no people in the building, uh, we had to be at the buildings whether there were people or not, if not, the supervisors say they would not get paid.
Entonces yo estuve aquí solita.
So I was here alone.
Ajá, y vinieron dos de ellos y me dijeron, cuídate porque si te pega el COVID nosotros te vamos a pagar.
And they said that you had to take care of yourself because if you got COVID, they were not gonna get paid.
Muchas gracias y espero que seamos escuchados todos y mis compañeros.
I wanna say thank you and I hope we're all listening to myself and my coworkers.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Antonia Ortiz.
Good evening, my name is Antonia Ortiz.
Este, estoy apoyando a mis compañeros, estoy de acuerdo en todo lo que ellos dijeron.
I am in support of all my work coworkers, I agree with everything they have said.
No estoy de acuerdo con el pago, es, ni el mínimo me están dando.
I do not agree with the salary, I'm not even getting minimum wage.
Este, si la compañía tiene este, está muy poco de personal, al cual este, a una persona le dan dos, tres áreas.
The company has very few workers, we get two or three big areas to clean.
Al cual este, no podemos, una sola persona hacer mucho, por lo mismo que no se deja muy bien la, de limpiar la escuela aunque nosotros queramos, no podemos.
So even if we wanna do a very good job, because we have so much to cover, we are not performing to our best, we cannot do it.
Y me preocupo porque tengo niños aquí en Stafford estudiando y pues la limpieza para mí no, no la veo muy bien.
And what I, and what I am concerned about is I have kids here in the school and I don't think the cleaning that we do is enough.
La compañía no quiere pagar horas extra.
The company does not wanna pay overtime.
Al cual muchos no quieren trabajar porque les ofrecen tres dólares más o cinco, por la hora.
The, a, a lot of us do not wanna do any overtime, because if they remunerate us, it's between three and five dollars extra an hour.
Y pues los pocos que estamos, este, son los que estamos pues limpiando lo que podemos.
And the few of us that are here are the ones that are cleaning as, as much as we can.
A la compañía le paga extra a personal más que ellos quieren.
ABM pays for whomever they want to only.
Es todo, gracias por su tiempo.
That's all, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Meladi y vengo este, apoyando a mis compañeros.
Good evening, my name is Meladi and I'm here to support my coworkers.
Y este, sería, además que yo dijera las mismas palabras que, que ellos han dicho, pero los preocupa porque yo tengo nietos en Stafford Elementary.
And it would be redundant to use the same words that the, my coworkers had used, but I do have, I, I'm worried because I do have grandkids in Stafford Elementary.
Y sé de que este, la limpieza no se está haciendo como antes porque no hay personal.
And I know that the cleaning is not being done as it used to be, because there is not enough staff.
Las mismas personas que están en la tarde, le dan sus tres horas, cuatro horas para que hagan esa, ese, esa sección.
Uh, the, the people that are there in the afternoon, they, they are giving three hours to do the job in the section that they have to do.
Y muchas veces cuando nosotros hacemos el área, hay que estarle recortando al manager porque las horas no las paga, sé que se le olvidó. Sí, o sea, las, no salen en el, no salen en el cheque.
So there are, there are, is that, las horas que trabajan de más o las horas que...
Sí, no, que sabamos de más.
Uh, the, the hours that, that we work, sometimes they don't come on the paycheck because he forgot to put them on.
Entonces, el año pasado yo trabajé bastante overtime y quedó regalado mi trabajo porque no me pagaron esas horas.
Last year I worked in a, a lot of overtime and I didn't get paid for that, so it was a gift to the company.
Así es que este, yo como mis compañeros les pido de favor de que escuchen nuestra voz y de que si pueden hacer, de que ellos los aumenten a pagar, como dijo mi compañero, a quince dólares si es posible la hora.
Uh, so as like my coworkers say, I hope that you help us and, and that we at least get paid fifteen an hour, like my coworkers say.
Y que el trato, y que el trato para mis compañeros sea eh, estable, que no sea pésimo cuando el manager se dirige a cada... Con respeto.
That, and that the treatment that, that my coworkers receive will, is respectful, not as bad as it's been.
Bueno, estas son mis palabras, muchas gracias.
Hay un Reyna, Reyna.
Why don't you call the next single?
Después de Reyna, after Reyna, uh, Pinrea, Pinrea Rosa, Adriana Calzada, Davis Grant, Nicole Gramonopoulos, Amy Reiser, and Eva McCarthy.
Mi nombre es Reina Rodríguez.
My name is Reina Rodríguez.
El motivo por estar aquí
My reason for being here.
Es porque yo quiero que, que haga un beneficio para todo.
Because I want benefit for all of us, vacations, paid vacations.
Tengo seis años de trabajar con la compañía ABM.
It's been six years since I worked for ABM.
Y pues los merecemos, que lo den vacaciones pagadas, no.
And we deserve at least to get vacation paid and to get a better salary, or better wages, sorry.
Bueno, mis, los maestros y maestros que están muy contentos conmigo porque yo me fui de vacaciones y quedaron preguntando por mí. Significa que eso yo estoy haciendo un buen trabajo.
And I think I'm doing a good job, it shows, because teachers have been asking for me, because I went on vacation and while I was gone, they were asking for me for where I was.
Y tuve un accidente con esa compañía y más bien me querían sacar a mí.
I had an accident while I was with that company and they wanted to get rid of me.
Yeah, me querían sacar porque
They wanted to get rid of me.
Yo tuve la culpa, dijeron.
Because they said that it was my fault.
Y eso no fue así.
And it wasn't that way.
Yeah, eso es una injusticia.
This is not fair, not just.
Yeah, y no estoy de acuerdo con lo que le están pagando a el sueldo. Hay en unas escuelas que están pagando más, le están pagando a los empleados y en otras escuelas le están pagando menos.
There's a huge disparity of pay, of wages between the different schools and that is not fair.
Yeah, y gracias por ponerme un ratito de atención.
And thank you for allowing me and giving me a little of the, your time and attention.
Buenas noches, buenas noches a todos.
Good evening to all.
Mi nombre es Adriana Calzado.
My name is Adriana Calzado.
Trabajo para Falmon Elementary.
I work at elementary, at Falmon Elementary School.
Casi tres años.
For almost three years.
Soy el líder del día.
I am the one that heads up the day work.
En, en lo mismo que mis compañeros, pido una persona para trabajar todo la escuela en un día.
And just like my coworkers, one person to work for the whole shift is way too much.
Todo el día, sorry. Pues solo el día, ocho horas en el día.
Oh, eight hours in the day, it's only one person.
Y la verdad que también necesitamos ayuda y...
And honestly, we need more help and better treatment.
Y que nos ayuden con el salario porque es muy bajo.
And to please to help us with the salary because it's way too low.
Y es todo, soportar a mis compañeros, muchas gracias.
And I'm here just to support my coworkers, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the board. My name is Nicole Gramonopoulos, a thirty-three-year resident of Stafford County, as well as the former PTO president at Parkridge Elementary.
Could you just pull the mic down?
Of eight years. Um, I am an Embry Mill resident in the Garrisonville District. I'm here tonight to implore you to table the vote tonight regarding the redistricting of Parkridge Elementary. Table it until other, more equitable, fair options can be considered. Here are some facts and our reasons why I feel you should not go through with the vote tonight. Facts I haven't heard to date. Do you know the number of students from Embry Mill going to Parkridge right now? It's four hundred and seventy-nine students, the bulk coming from Phase Two. The most were, that most were not part of the redistricting in the last cycle. Do you know how many buses that requires right now? It's six buses. Do you know how many more homes are being built? It's three hundred and one, not including the Cascades, the over fifty-five community. I counted, I counted them personally. However, those shouldn't be counted out. A lot of families rely on grandparents for their childcare and there still could be students that come from the Cascades for that reason. I have heard it said that Acquah Harbor all goes to one school. The home number for Embry Mill is at, is at eighteen hundred total build and Acquah Harbor sitting at twenty-eight hundred. There are actually twenty-two hundred and seven houses, seventeen hundred and eighty-six are family households. The average age in Acquah Harbor is forty, forty point nine years of age. Embry Mill is marketed to young families, the average age personing, purchasing is thirty-four point nine years of age. With the amount of children moving out of Embry Mill and back into it, they will, they will continue to be an issue. Hoping or wishing for a new school to be built is not a strategy. As you can see, just by the numbers given here today, with the growth of Embry Mill, it's going to be impossible to not have this conversation again in two years with the plans that are on the table. Pres will be back at overcrowded before the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is over. I invite all the school board members to come and drive Embry Mill with me. I believe this is, this is a must before you make a decision that will affect these small children's lives. With both redistricting and bell schedules on the table at the same time, it is important to give equal attention to both. Embry Mills where the most of the pressure will come off. With the current plans and the domino, the domino effect is unavoidable. It is happening and has been happening. If you're looking at Conway, people to move in a cycle, in twice of a cycle, it can be done in other locations. There is no new school to be built as of right now, we can, we can't pretend it's going to be there anytime soon. Thank you.
Buenas noches, señores, señoras y señoras de la junta escolar, superintendent. Mi nombre es Nubia Cabrera.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, my name is Nubia Cabrera.
Trabajo para YCA MBA desde dos mil ocho hasta esta fecha. I have been working for GCA? GCA, MBA. For eighteen years. I've served as supervisor in the schools and also as leader. I have been working as a supervisor and a leader at the schools. But I feel that they have been unjust with me. Because I worked in a high school, and when I asked them to move to an elementary school where I wanted to clean the school, they lowered my salary. Until now, in sixteen years that I've been working, they pay me only thirteen dollars per hour. I work in my school, my house, because I care, I love the school, I love the kids, the teachers, and the principal. I work very hard. Very hard, yes. And I feel that they don't respect my time, my experience, and the time I have given. My experience, my time, and I feel that I've been treated unfairly. They had not respected my experience, the time I had given. My experience, my time, and I feel that I've been treated unfairly. I feel that they had not, they had not respected my experience, the time I had given. My experience, my time, and I feel that I've been treated unfairly. I work in White Water. I work in White Water. Until now, please, gentlemen, we want you to be our voices, we want you to speak for us. Because, just like my colleagues, we work for the schools, we want to do a good job. Please hear us and be our voice because we love the work we do and we want to do a good job. Yes, I forgot. And we want that they recognize, they respect, and recognize our rights and that they listen. Good evening. Thank you for your time. God bless you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor and members of the board. My name is Amy Riser and I live in the Garrisonville District, but more specifically the manners of Park Ridge. Tonight, you'll be making a decision that affects the neighborhood where I live and my children attend school. Plans B and D move students out of Park Ridge that live in the Park Ridge community. You're looking to move students who will now pass their current school to attend another. The overcrowding problem at Park Ridge Elementary is not because of the Park Ridge community. There are currently four hundred and seventy-nine students from Embry Mill at Park Ridge Elementary. In Plans B and D, you're only moving one hundred and seventy-five to one hundred and seventy-nine students, which only brings Park Ridge down to one hundred and one percent capacity. Embry Mill is a community that is still growing at a rapid rate. Taking one hundred and seventy-nine students from the Park Ridge neighborhoods will not be any type of long-term solution for Park Ridge Elementary. It cannot even be considered a short-term solution if you think about the number of children that will come from the homes yet to be built in Embry Mill. Embry Mill is a huge community, and until we get new schools, they will need to be split. It's not the responsibility of established communities to move and make space for the new communities. The poor planning of the Stafford County School Board in the 2019 elementary redistricting has created the conundrum we are currently in. Why was Garrisonville Elementary allowed to sit at such a low capacity three years ago when the largest part of Embry Mill was not yet built? If you're considering splitting the Park Ridge community, why were the homes that sit closer to Garrisonville Road not considered for a move? They're closer to Garrisonville Elementary and will not need to pass Park Ridge Elementary to get there. There are other options, but we are not being heard. One of the most disappointing things to see as a parent is that in many respects, our county is reactive rather than proactive. Why are we even letting our schools get to over one hundred percent capacity before planning for new schools? In the last two meetings I've attended, we were presented with factors to consider when moving students. The first several factors listed were the following: proximity of schools to student residence, walking distances, busing times and costs, impact on neighborhoods, and feeder patterns. These factors were not seriously considered. There are students that live nine hundred feet, up to a half a mile, that are being moved. Many of us can and have walked to school over the last one and a half years due to the COVID restrictions on buses and lengthy car lines. Students that do ride buses will now spend more time on busy roads before and after school, and our buses and car riders will get mixed up in the school traffic at the intersection of Parkway Boulevard and Hampton Park Road. In Plan B, my neighborhood has one street staying at Park Ridge, and the rest will go to Garrisonville. And lastly, Park Ridge students are already split between Thompson and Poole for middle school. The homes in these plans are already split while all of Garrisonville feeds into AG Wright. These plans are not logical, and they are not a three- to five-year solution as we were told that they were in our community meeting. While I understand time is of the essence, this is not a decision that should be made hastily. Until a larger-scale redistricting can take place, the students of the Park Ridge community should not be taken out of Park Ridge Elementary School. Please reconsider the two plans you have before you, and I ask for more time. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor and school board members. My name is Davis Grant. I'm proudly a product of Stafford County Public Schools, went to middle school in this building, remember it being a library. Graduated North Stafford High School in nineteen ninety-three, not to show my age, but I was lucky enough to marry my high school sweetheart, have a son that now proudly attends Brookpoint High School as a junior, and attends a Commonwealth Governor's School at Stafford High School. I originally had one talking point tonight, but I'm going to add one, and that is to support all the speakers that just previously spoke. I learned a long time ago, any building, the success of any building starts with the custodial maintenance. Without them, it all crumbles. Onto my main talking point. Of all Stafford County public school grade levels, high school students are the closest to being our next political leaders, doctors, teachers, auto mechanics, school bus drivers, electricians, childcare providers, and et cetera. Some of our students will enter the real world starting in just a few months after graduation. You and I are going to be depending on them very soon for a multitude of reasons, and if we all did our job right, they will not be depending on us as much. Some of our high school students already have one foot in the real world because they must work after-school jobs for some of the following reasons: to help save and prepare for college, trade school, military, just our future; or help pay for a car or car insurance and gas so they can get to and from sports and extracurricular activities, including clubs, tutoring, and et cetera. Many students aren't fortunate enough to solely rely on their parents or guardians to cover a hundred percent of those expenses. Some are even less fortunate and must work after-school jobs to help pay for general family expenses, such as food, clothing, housing. It's sad, but it's true. Regardless of the high school student must work an afternoon job or not, they are soon going to be entering the real world, and they should be prepared for it. This means they'll be getting up early in the morning and go to college classes, trade school classes, or go to work, or physical training in the military at 2:00 a.m. or 3:00 a.m. As we as society try to improve our education system, we have to be cautious of it not becoming so disconnected from the real world after high school. Please do not think education or instruction alone is going to prepare all of our students for the real world. If you do, you are sadly mistaken. Not every student is going to college. Our high school students are young adults, and we need to start viewing them as such. If we just coddle them, they will not live up to their full potential. The old-school system with the high schoolers going early worked for many years and for many reasons. It may not have been a hundred percent perfect, but what is? But it was much better and provided a much better chance of success for students of all ages, social levels, and planned futures. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eva McCarthy, and my children are students at Colonial Forge. I am beyond disappointed that even after the survey results, which showed that parents and children favored an early high school start, and even after the extensive research conducted by Dr. Taylor and the transportation team, a late high school start is still being considered. I've heard that literature validates elementary going first and high school going last. We can all easily find studies and literature that support our cause, so I'm not going to do that. Instead, I ask that you look at the real-life implications that the current schedule has had on high school students. The reality is that the late high school start has left less time for homework activities, unemployment, and ultimately sleep. The hours have not eliminated workload or responsibilities, and have actually forced students to try to accomplish the same things in less time. I respect the elementary teachers coming out to speak and won't argue that elementary children are typically early risers, but this doesn't mean that they are incapable of learning at a later start. Current high schoolers had the elementary time, the late elementary time, and this didn't prevent them from taking honors or AP classes, getting into CGS or the STAT program, graduating, or being accepted into college. It is human nature to tune out at the end of the day, and this is not limited to elementary school. That said, if elementary teachers are worried about children not absorbing core material at the end of the day, then those subjects should be moved to the beginning part of the day. Back when my children were that age and when attention span was low, teachers took a few minutes to refocus them by having them dancing, et cetera. There are a number of ways to engage a child's attention without having to shift the entire school day around and disrupt the lives of the other student groups. The concern in the latest meetings has been the long days for elementary school. As a parent who has experienced all three schedules, I can honestly say that high school days are not only the longest, but the most demanding. For students involved in school activities, their day easily runs nine hours and up to twelve hours or more on game or event days. Elementary children get to come home after school or daycare, complete minimal homework, play, and rest. High school students do not have this luxury. For those who are studious and are involved in activities, they are staying up into the early morning hours to complete homework. They are not getting more sleep, they are getting less. In my opinion, it is baffling that an even later high school start is being considered. However, if that option is chosen, and because the schedule is not shared by neighboring counties, we need to know the plan for recouping the two to three hours of lost instructional time when our children are bused to school-sponsored events. COVID has put them behind, and it's unfair to make them miss more. They deserve better than this, and you have the ability to make this happen. Please look at the real-life examples rather than learning studies, which may not completely account for all the factors that impact the life of a high school student. Please accept the research conducted by Dr. Taylor and his team as it is based on the reality of the transportation challenges of this county. Give high school the early start to ease the burden on the students and transportation system, and return some semblance of normalcy to children who haven't seen normal in two years. Thank you.
Do we have any other persons signed up, Ms. Hall?
No ma'am, that was the last speaker.
All right, if there's anyone else who wishes to address the board, please line up on the side of the room, and when we finish with the speakers, we will close the hearing. Just alternate until there's no people on one side, and then come on down. Since you're by yourself, come on down. Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were at the Jaguar.
I'm coming up again.
You have the timers, the referees, right?
Yes, yes. But I'm coming up again to speak on something.
No, we can only have one time. I'm sorry, we've got over, we had forty people that signed up, and then it looks like we have another dozen.
Even though I want to speak about something totally different.
No, it's only one, 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 three minutes per person. Sorry.
We had a town hall before, or like it was open something, so people had spoke twice at other meetings previously, but usually it's just...
I just want to support the ABM people because they do.
I'm sorry. You can actually come into the next meeting or put something online. Well, let's start over here. If you can come forward and give us your name and address. When you finish speaking, then you can sign in, but we want to try to make this efficient so we can get to the action part of the meeting, which I know a lot of you are waiting for decisions on that.
Okay. My name is Deborah Snyder. I live at Abiscorp Court. Hi, Patricia.
Hello.
I live at Abiscorp Court, and in the Rock Hill District. And I'm here tonight as a taxpayer, even though my daughter went all the way from K through twelve in Garrisonville. She and my granddaughter are both Gators, or Go Gators. And now my grandchildren are military kids, military brats, I guess, so, March twenty-second. So, I've got a little skin in the game. But when I, I'm here tonight, not as a parent or a grandparent, but as somebody who has heard that people are in trouble, mainly the cleaning staff in the schools. They were eloquent. I couldn't say anything that they didn't already point out, except for this. I am really sick and tired with COVID, with the war in Ukraine. I am sick and tired of the way people are being treated by these large international corporations. ABM has a revenue stream of, they're an international corporation, and they have a revenue stream of six point four billion dollars. Now, come along, these dear people who, whom I have come to respect and admire. They are courageous. They are fighting in a language that isn't theirs. They have no representation at all. And what I'm sick and tired of tonight as a taxpayer is it's come down to my door. My husband and I pay taxes. Our children, grandchildren, our dear sweet kids aren't here, but we still pay plenty of taxes to Stafford School. And I think it's about time that we took responsibility, all of us, every single person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry I'm not prepared to talk. So, I'm here representing my son. He's a high schooler. So, and I just, my name is Adriana Belfer, and, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to know that he's a high schooler, but just like many other parents, I respect their opinions and what they want for their household. He was one time also an elementary schooler and a middle schooler. And as a parent, we have a responsibility to provide them with opportunities. So, when they're little, we need to be there for them. So, we need to teach them where to go or what to do. We're the parents. We need to get up early, and we need to tackle all those responsibilities. Now, the high schoolers, they got to the age that they need to get those opportunities for themselves. So, now it's like talking to my son, talking to his friends, and seeing the times that they go to high school, which is late. I was thinking, okay, so this is perfect. I mean, they got used to getting up late. That's not the case. I mean, these kids, they're ready to work. They're getting ready to apply for college. I'm talking to them, and they're talking about getting tutors because they're getting ready to get their ACT test. So, we get up in the morning, I'm ready to go to work, and my son is getting ready to go to school. And he said, "Mom, have a great day." And I said, "What are you doing?" "Oh, Mom, I have a test, and I have to submit an application, Mom." I said, "Okay, great." I would say the time won't affect him because he'll be getting ready to work. Oh, he'll be getting ready to drive, so he'll be driving himself. Okay? However, Stafford is growing, and we're bringing more business. So, we as a parent right now, the ones that we have, the little ones, and we still don't have high schoolers, we say, "Hey, I don't want to jump from one, from place A, from place B, to juggle around my kid. But when you get out of school, you want to go to the smoothie place and get that for your kids." We have, right now, you go to these restaurants, and they are full of high schoolers. So, we want this business to keep running. We want this town to keep growing. So, we need the high schoolers. We need to give them opportunities. So, please, just follow the... So please, just follow the superintendent recommendations that the majority of parents, they want the high school students to go first. And please, just build opportunities for them. Thank you.
My name is Milton Bratton. I'm from the Griffiths-Widewater District. Glad to meet you, Ms. Warner, or Dr. Warner. Today, you had an opportunity to talk or listen to a group of people that came to you as a trust to say, "We have a problem. Could you please listen to us, and can you assist us to do better than what we are receiving right now?" There's a lot of things that could have been said, but the more important thing in all of this is anytime change happens in any section of society, there's always going to be pushback, or could be pushback. And so when these ladies and gentlemen come to you with a concern for asking for better conditions in America, they're also asking you to please protect them from any type of retaliation, as anything could possibly be when you're talking to your boss or talking about your boss in Virginia, which is a right-to-work state, the possibility of that happening is very realistic. So when they come to you in the group that they did, not only are they asking to help, but they are also asking to make sure that their jobs are still available, and they just magically didn't look correctly, or they came in a couple of minutes late, and now they're no longer working. So the trust that they have to you, that they gave to you, to protect their jobs, to look out for them, means a lot. And so when I got to talk to those individuals and listen to those stories, it's amazing for what they do, for what little that they get. Thank you for listening. Love them.
My name is Melvin Allen, and I live in the, well, where do you live at, Melvin? I live off of Burnin' Bush, I live off of Burnin' Bush in the Garrisonville area. Just glad to be here, I haven't been here in a minute. But I'm sitting here and I hear two interesting things. I'm really displeased with what, the American people just can't sit in front of much American people. That's weird to me, in America. I spent a twenty-four year, and to come back to America? Another thing is budget, we're talking about, I think we have a contest with the, well, I ain't gonna say a contest, but some type of disagreement, board supervisors and with this budget thing. Mel wants to see the budget. As soon as y'all get this high-priced document up, Mel wants to see it, because there's so many arguments. I'm not a Democrat, I ain't no Republican, so I'm focused on African-American. I'm an American. You all are the ones that we put up here to take care of this school. When they put board supervisors to take care of this school, they are to manage other money, they don't manage us. I think they would go to tell the board supervisor. We put y'all here to do something. Hold our money. Hold our money, don't hold our money on our kids. The most powerful thing America got right now are kids. We gonna leave here one day. Somebody gotta take your spot. Somebody gotta take your spot, your spot, your spot, your spot, but we ain't got no money for them to get to that spot. But I'm going, I need to see that budget, please, whenever y'all finish with it, and I want to keep an eye on this. That's very, very serious. That's very serious. Thank you for your time. Stafford County probably the best place I've ever lived in my life. It's clean, it's quiet, and that y'all do a real good job. I have no complaint with Stafford County School. I don't have no complaint with Stafford County judicial system. We are clean. I live right over by the prettiest school, I think it is, and that's the one off the, where I lived over there, the one after the black guy, H.H. Poole. Most beautiful place I ever lived. One way in, one way out. If you don't live there, we don't live there. Thank y'all, y'all doing a great job.
Good evening to all of you. Respectfully, I'm asking if you could please, please table your decision for the redistricting. My name is Lindsay Harzat. I live in the Park Ridge community. I have some questions and some statements, and you can please, just, if you have any answers, just tell me afterwards, after I'm done speaking. I don't understand why you would redistrict somebody who can walk to school. We can walk to school, we have problems with the buses. I don't know how you're gonna get my kids to school when they didn't have a regular bus until the first of the year, and then I have them go to another school that's out of the area. I have three children, high schooler, I have middle schooler, elementary schooler, and I'm struggling just with the bell schedule because it's all different now, and I'm not doing a good job getting my kids, when they have medical problems. I have two kids that have medical problems. Have you guys considered the fact that there are people who have special needs children in the community, and we have to get to them? And now I don't have to worry about that, I have to worry about that a lot. I like to be able to help other people get to school in the morning time because we can walk, but now I don't know how I'm gonna get my own children to school. So just please, I just respect those, please, if you could just understand that we want to stay in our neighborhood so that we can get our kids to school. I just, it's a reality for me, my kids have, two of my kids go to the hospital, and one of them's been in six hospitals in two months, and two of them are out of state. So I just don't know, like, if you could please table the plan and, like, consider special needs kids, and the people that are in the neighborhood that have special needs that live there, so that they don't have to worry about being unsafe on the roads. Thank you very much for your time. These are my medical bills, if you want to, feel free to look at those.
Okay, I know I'm a fan favorite. Okay, so I am now going to talk about redistricting, cleaning, the bell schedule, or turf fields. So, you're wondering what it is. All right. So, have any of you, you can just shake your head, been to a high school football game lately here in Stafford? So you know there's this great app, okay, GoFan. So I want to go to my son's lacrosse game tomorrow. I go on GoFan, I order a ticket. Okay, ever since COVID, you can't go pay cash, you have to order online. So, I go, order a site, the ticket's six dollars, but guess what? I get to pay seven because there's a fee, there's a one-dollar fee. Okay? So, that dollar doesn't go to Stafford County Public Schools, it goes to GoFan. So proud of those people who came up with it, but right now, it's about us. So, if you think about this, Friday night, we have five schools in the district, thousand people come to the games, probably more than that, but just call it a thousand, that's a thousand dollars you're leaving on the table, that parents already pay for. We've already been conditioned to pay the seven dollars. So that money's on the table. And then you figure there's five schools, that's five thousand dollars. Each high school has what, let's call it six home games, five home games? I don't know, my math isn't great, but I'm looking at, we saying about thirty thousand dollars? That's a lot of money. Then, we've got basketball, we got wrestling. Heck, my daughter plays field hockey, okay, you're not gonna make much money off of that. But, but, I love my daughter, but, there, if you add all this money together, why are we not? Because when I go and show my phone, there's a lady sitting there, and she'd like touch it, or you touch it, and she says, "Okay, you've paid." Well, I've already, you've already paid for this person there right now anyway, so why not raise ticket prices, pocket the money? Hey, gas prices have doubled, so even if that only pays for gas on your buses, it's money you don't take from somewhere else. I don't know if you're aware of that money that could be somewhere, but hey, every single dollar counts, and when you start adding it up, it's a good amount of money. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Fiamon Anas, and I'm a junior at Brookpoint High School. And like most of our previous speakers from Brookpoint and other high schools have said, there are many, many factors that lead to these later start times being inconvenient and even harmful for us high school students. I'm a high school student, I'm a junior, I am an IB student who is taking college level classes, and that means more homework and more out-of-class time studying. IB classes mean that I have to study for each class itself, an internal assessment for each class, that can take up to like weeks at a time, and studying for the IB exams at the end of the year. Not only this, all IB students have to have a certain amount of CAS experiences. These are volunteering and acts of service that we cannot earn our diploma without. Almost none of us have any time for these with everything else. We also have to do multiple two-thousand or four-thousand word essays for each class. With the three-thirty out time and my one-hour bus ride, I get home at four-thirty, sometimes even five. This is on the days that I have no extracurricular activities. On those days, I'm lucky if I get home before six. This leads to me instantly start on my homework after eating a really late lunch or dinner. That homework takes me approximately four to six hours every single night. This isn't because I'm slow at doing my homework, no, I put my phone away and I try to finish as early as I can, but it still takes forever because of those higher-level classes. It got so bad that I thought to drop out of these classes next year after I've worked so hard on all of them. These days, I'm sleeping later and later, which, to my mother's dismay, means that I spend no time with my family out for like the five days out of a week. They don't see my face outside of eating together, which I also have to rush. I don't get to take breaks, my entire daily routine has been stuck to school, homework, and then sleeping for a bare amount of hours. This repeats over and over. I was literally just reviewing my homework while preparing for this speech and watching everyone. So half of us are doing work during lunches at school as well. Every single student and friend that I've talked to feels the same way. We all want earlier start times, and you should know that this is strange coming from a high school student. At the beginning of the year, I loved the idea and the leisure of waking up late. However, now I realize how grave this really is. High schoolers do deserve life outside of school, work, and athletics. On top of all of this, many of us are applying for college. We're stressed about that, about keeping up our GPAs, about doing well on our sports teams, about earning money for our families. This is no way for adolescents to live, and I hope you all realize that an early start time would mean better performances and better mental health for and from high school students. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Ayanna, I'm a junior in Brookpoint High School, and I'm also an IB student. Fiamon covered a lot of what our daily life as an IB student is. I would like to mention that during this meeting, I did study for my Latin quiz because our academics never slow down, and during lunch, we also study for the thirty minutes we have downtime we use for class because we don't have that for home usually. Now, my academic schedule and the time has affected me majorly. I have around one to four hours of homework as an international baccalaureate student, excluding what I need to study for quizzes and tests. I rarely have time to enjoy my time with friends or watch a movie before I can go to sleep at an acceptable time, often leading me to stay up late just to unwind from a busy day. Sometimes during class, kids will have breakdowns, meltdowns, or even will have to stop class altogether because we are incredibly stressed by our academics, and we have no time to wind down after school, so we have to vent during class. Furthermore, my peers at school are tired and stressed constantly. I have many friends in sports who come back to class unprepared for tests and quizzes because they have to choose between homework and studying, or getting enough sleep. More often than not, we choose our academics over our own health. I believe that this is inappropriate that us, as high school students, have to choose if our futures are worth risking our health. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Gutierrez, and I'm a junior at Brookpoint High School. I would like to start off by stating that I am absolutely for a new, earlier schedule. Over the course of my life, I've always done my best at school and was rewarded for my efforts. However, the current bell schedule has done nothing but punish me for my efforts and for my success in the future. I'm an international baccalaureate student, and therefore I am constantly swamped with work. Normally, I'd be all right with the workload, but due to the late schedule, I have no time to do anything outside of school and work. I work four to six days a week, usually from five-thirty to ten, and sometimes from four to eleven-thirty. Without a change of time, I will not be able, I will not be able to complete my homework in time. And additionally, I've just been so overwhelmed and burdened by the amount of schoolwork that I've had that I've often stayed up till one and two in the morning just trying to do everything. And I just want to participate as much as possible so I can just get into a good college and achieve my dreams of becoming a wildlife biologist. With this current schedule, I, I need to, sorry. I just want to just like accomplish everything. Honestly, I'm just at my breaking point at this point, and I just really want just to support myself and my family without like having the constant pressure of being totally overwhelmed with work and school. I genuinely stay up till one to two in the morning sometimes, and it's just really hard for me. And honestly, it's just, I don't know, it's overwhelming at this point, and I feel like it'd be nice for a change of pace because I have two little younger siblings, and like, they still have some of their work to do, but they're both elementary schoolers, and I am just like so bombarded with everything that my friends are just also talking about how much work we have. I have two quizzes to next come tomorrow, and I'm barely studying because I'm here at the meeting. I'm honestly just so done with everything, and I just really want someone, or for you guys, to like help us, you know? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maio Kuhn Omitogun, and I am a junior and an international baccalaureate student at Brookpoint High School, as well as my friends. I wasn't only sure if I was gonna make it tonight because I never really get home at a reasonable time anymore. For the first times ever, I fell asleep in my class yesterday because I had to stay up and finish my homework that I didn't do over the break because it was a break that I really needed, and I was faced with the stress that I can't really stand anymore, and knowing that sleep is now a luxury to me. I know all of my classmates who attended with me today feel the exact same way, and some of them even worse. I was trudied to school for the first time in my entire K through twelve experience because I was exhausted beyond belief. I mean, imagine for weeks you have to stay up to three AM for five days straight. I have out-of-school activities, family commitments, a life outside of school, but due to this schedule, my whole life revolves around school. Everyone says that the time, everyone says that the statistics say that school later is better for the kids, but who are the kids that are truly in this county happy with the schedule? I mean, have any of you guys in this room ever been begged to go to sleep before, or have been pulled aside and asked if you're sleeping all right? I've always been known to be a hard worker, but this work for me now is honestly just churning out assignments as fast as I can to possibly get them done. And because I know I have to wait until, because I know if I wait until the next day, that load will continue to build and build and build on top of itself. Today, I even had to study for my Latin quiz, and if I don't, and if you don't really know what IB Latin is like, it takes hours to memorize some twenty lines of Latin for you to churn out the next day for a quiz. And I'm here trying to convince all of you that, to change the schedule. I'm taking this time because I know, once again, I'm gonna have to stay up to three AM for another day in a row. I've already had to tell my mom that I was gonna have to go to school later today again, and I'm gonna have to miss some of my classes. But I digress. I would like for all of you guys to imagine what it's like to be pulled aside in your gym class, and now my heart is racing because I'm a good student, I don't do things purposely to get me in any form of trouble, but guess what she tells me? Pull out your computer, you're emailing your school but representative right now. I was honestly perplexed, and then I realized that all she's ever seen me do is work and work and work in her class, because I'm just stressed about the fact that my workload is gonna be faced with when I get home. She took the time to come to me and ask me to do something for the betterment of my health. So here I am, now talking to all of you, as you can see that the main ones here are adults, and I can imagine you all understand the reasons because everyone is busy. The seventy percent of our students aren't represented because they make, they can't make the time to come here. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, if anyone else wants to speak, please line up because we're going to close the comment period when the last speaker speaks.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for listening to So Many Perspectives. My name is Lisa Snow. I've been an educator for 34 years, 15 years in secondary science, and the last 19 as an elementary school counselor, and now at Conway Elementary. I have four children of my own who graduated from Stafford County Schools, and working with our youngest students is a privilege as we hope to shape their lives. The day in the life of an elementary child starts early regardless of anything. Needless to say, when the kids got, get, my kids got to middle school and high school, I was happy for their later beginnings up. Learning takes physical, mental, and emotional energy. When kids are tired or have already used up a lot of their energy at home or in daycare before school, they're not in the best mind space to learn when they get there. Our counseling offices have seen far fewer kids coming into school upset, angry, and frustrated in the morning before the school day has even begun in this early schedule. This is why you have teachers saying their kids are coming in happy and ready to learn. This allows us as counselors to be more proactive and preventative, being able to teach kids emotional regulation strategies in classroom lessons before they escalate in the day so they are better able to handle these at later times. The amount of kids we see in the counseling offices during the afternoon rises as the day goes on. The meltdowns are real. We are talking about adding hours to their afternoons. At the last meeting, I heard a lot about tutoring and sports. These things happen at elementary as well. To tutor an elementary child that has been up since 6:00 a.m., gone to daycare, done a full day of school, socializing, and then 11 hours later try to tutor them after school can be heart wrenching, but we still try. The elementary students also don't have the luxury of having their sports and clubs at school. They have to make the ride home, grab a quick dinner, go back out somewhere else to their soccer, their Girl Scouts, their football. If they don't do these then, they might not make the teams in middle school and high school. Then by the time they get home at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, they're already past their bedtime. They've had no time for homework, no downtime with their parents or friends, and they have to hurry up to get ready to do it the next day. We are setting them up for failure. When they can't make it through their rigorous day, when they get in trouble for not being able to hold it together, when they can't do their schoolwork to their benchmark, when they have meltdowns, they internalize this as failures and believe that they are bad kids, when in fact, we've set them up for this failure. This is why I'm so passionate about this. In my experience, on the two schedules, I have done fewer suicide risk assessments on the early schedule during a pandemic than I did in any year on the later schedule. Many of these risk assessments are done in the afternoon when the kids have been pushed past their limits, and then they can carry those failures with them. We need to make good decisions for them to set them up for good success. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Julia, and I'm a sophomore at Culloden Forge. And, I'm sorry, I have anxiety, it's like, yeah. But I just, everyone else, like for the first bell schedule, for high schools to go first, they made really good points, but I just wanted to speak on like a student's point of view. And personally, I feel as though if we got out later, then most people wouldn't really do their homework or study for tests because already, most of us don't want to do that at all, and if we got out later, we honestly still wouldn't do it. So it's just like, I'm sorry. Woo, with me. I just feel as though, like, if you, okay, you can take away after school activities, but some people depend on those extracurriculars like football or basketball to get scholarships to go to school, and you know, if they don't get that scholarship, it's like the end of the world to some of them because it's like, okay, what am I gonna do? Yes, they can, you know, get other scholarships, but some people, they, they just can't, I'm sorry. I'm doing really bad.
You're doing great. Your light's still green.
But, I, most teachers, most of the teachers that I've had, they told me, they have told me that they give us homework to help us study for tests or SOBOS or PRC or anything. And, which, if, if we got out of school at 4:00 and they gave us homework to do that, and we had homework from each and every class, that there alone, depending on how fast you work, and if you're like really good at the material, that could still take like five to six hours alone. And on top of that, after school activities, like my mom, she came appearance book. I was a basketball manager, and practice started at 6:30 and it ended at 8:30, which that, that right there alone, that was also, you know, like really long. But, there was times I had to take time off from basketball to be able to finish work because I've had work for multiple classes, all four of my classes every day. And I've had mental breakdowns because I've been struggling to finish the work and stay on grade level to be able to do the stuff that I like, like clubs or after school activities. So like, if we, if we go earlier, it would just, it would just help us so much, and it's just make it easier for us, because like, like other people said, there's, I, like, I'm sorry. My mom also said that I want to start working, which I do, I really want to start working because I just, it's fun to me, and I won't be able to do that if we get out of school at 4:00. I'm sorry, yeah.
Good job. Alright, that closes our citizen comment period. Before we get to the board committee reports, I'm going to take a 10 minute break if there's no objection from the board. Six minutes, alright, six minutes. At 9:11.
No, 10, that clock is wrong.
Whatever, oh, 10, oh yes, geez. I wish it were 9. And Dr. Taylor, would there be any objection if we moved your superintendent's first 100 days transition report to early at the next meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to oblige.
Okay, we've got, we've got a lot going on, and I want to make sure we get full attention. So I guess it'll be like 120 days or whatever. Alright, that brings us to board committee reports, any brief reports?
I will be very quick, thank you, Madam Chair, the FabC did meet. I want to report that the attendance incentives and hiring for substitutes has seems to have paid off, and we had a great uptick in coverage for our Fridays. The new business that we discussed was establishing a calendar for department visits to discuss goals, needs, and wants in the upcoming budget seasons. We did talk about projected year-end savings and potential projects. I know there's a number of things that are on the three R list that are being signed up for next year. We had a very good presentation on a solar project for North Stafford High School that would be the largest solar array in the state, and it would, there's no cost to us, this was in the FabC packet, there would be no cost to us, and eventually we would, we would see savings and even potentially sale of extra electrical power off of our grid. We do have to, the upcoming year, we can anticipate that the electrical costs will be more like three quarters of a million more than we budgeted, and fuel costs will likely remain high with the ongoing war in Ukraine and other issues that affect fuel prices, so we can expect maybe another 20, 30% increase above that. The next, and that's really it for me.
Alright, any other board committee reports? No? On Dr. Taylor, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be very brief. I definitely want to thank our parents and students and teachers who came out tonight to give public comment and to be present this evening. One of the things that I would have shared in my transition report, and I guess I get to do in a couple more weeks, is to talk about all the ways that I've had the opportunity to engage with the community, to evaluate our progress, and to empower those to act on behalf of our children. And it brings me great joy, even though it adds to the length of our meetings that we have, so many folks that are engaged in some of the tough decisions that this board has chosen to take up in the early days of my tenure and this board's tenure. So, thank you very much for everybody who came out. Special thanks to Colonel Brooks, who has a very busy schedule at Quantico, and as the commanding officer of that base, to unify our partnership and to be present with us. It really was a pretty significant thing for him to be here this evening, and we thank him and his team for making that happen. A very exciting day that I feel like I need to share a couple elements. I got to start my day at Rock Hill Elementary School where I got to participate in an unveiling of their One School One Book, and this year at Rock Hill, it is Fenway and Hattie by Victoria Co. And this was a spectacular event because not only did Rock Hill get an opportunity to connect with the author, and the author did a video personalized for Rock Hill and to greet the students and welcome them to the book, the music teacher wrote a song about the book that all the students will sing every time they do chapter reviews, the staff recorded audio chapters for students, and had an interactive website for the students and families to participate in, and it was just absolutely fantastic. I then also got an opportunity to visit Falmouth Elementary School where I got to visit with the Growing Up Gentlemen, where we talked about problem solving and conflict resolution, and really enjoyed meeting with that group of young people that just were absolutely fantastic. And before this meeting, I had the chance to spend some time with our board of supervisors to talk about the capital improvement program that the board adopted in the fall and then has relooked at again as some of its priorities have changed through our growth management strategies that you're looking at this evening. I will say I found that discussion to be very engaging and very supportive of a lot of the things that the board has chosen to approach and tackle this year, and it has absolutely been a positive experience. And I want to thank our supervisors for inviting both me and Mr. Fulmer to visit with them today, because that's not something that they had to do. They did that as a request because they wanted to seek information and to see things from your perspective, and it was an honor to represent you today. We have a lot of things going on in the school division that I want to bring some recognition to. Tomorrow is the 30th annual blood drive for Stafford County Public Schools, and it is completely full, thanks to all of our community's blood donors. The American Red Cross is facing a national blood shortage crisis, and even though our blood drive is full, please, if you have the ability and the inclination, please visit a hospital or our blood donation site to give blood. We're happy to participate in this community philanthropy. One of the things that I would report on in my transition plan as well is the many listen and learn activities that I've had throughout our community, and it has been something that has kind of caught on, and we've had a group of folks that have gone to several of these now, and we've decided we're gonna keep that going in perpetuity. And we even have one Thursday night at Dixon Smith Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30, and the entire community is invited, for those who just want to talk about some of the issues of today. And if you can't make it to this week's, we're gonna do another one next month, and another one after that, and we're gonna host them in different events, excuse me, different venues at different times during the day so that folks can attend. We have a very busy weekend in Stafford County Public Schools. On Saturday morning, we are hosting a job fair at Stafford High School. We encourage the community to invite your friends and family, and those who are new to the area or those who are in our surrounding area, to come be a part of the magic that we have in Stafford County Public Schools. We're very excited for this offering. And then immediately after our hiring event, we have our Fine Arts Festival. And this is a huge event, this is our 46th Annual Fine Arts Fest, and it will be held at Brookpoint High School from 11:00 in the morning till 4:00 p.m. both on Saturday and on Sunday. This is a great opportunity to see some of our highlighted talents, both pre-K all the way through high school. We'll get to see over 5,000 works of art on display, as well as a lot of student performances of all varieties. It just is an absolutely fantastic event, just based on what I've seen in the planning, and I can't wait to attend, and certainly look forward to seeing the rest of the community there as well. We do have an event that our Stafford Education Foundation is planning for the spring, on May 13th. They will have their annual, or I should say their first annual gala, an Evening with the Stars, where they will have performances from Stafford County Public Schools students. And there's an opportunity to audition to be a part of Evening with the Stars from our students, and there's an open call for auditions on Sunday, March 27th, and we'll post some materials about that. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that kindergarten registration is in full swing on March 29th, and we'll have a series of opportunities for folks to register their kindergartners for school. We will have an event March 29th right here in the Bandy complex at our Professional Development Center, and we'll have interpreters for Spanish, Dari, Farsi, Pashto, and Urdu as well so that we can get folks signed up for kindergarten as they need to. Last couple things that we have going on, we have a staff health fair. This is the first time that we've done something like this, being attentive to our staff wellness needs on April 2nd, where we're welcoming our staff and family to a special event here at Bandy as well. And it will be our inaugural health and wellness fair for our staff and their families. Very excited about this, that we'll have panel discussions and different health activities to engage in. The last item that I wanted to bring to the community's attention is Student Government Day on April 6th. And this is a great opportunity for our students to engage with local government and our county board of supervisors, as well as our county offices, as well as our school offices and the services that we provide to this community. And this is a great way to inspire our future of county leadership and our students. And that was noted by one of our speakers this evening, that we at some point will all be replaced by students that are currently in our schools. We certainly hope so, but let's prepare them well and make sure that they have a great experience on Student Government Day. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the opportunities that the board has given me to learn from this great community and to continue to serve.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So we'll look forward to hearing from you early at the next meeting. So everyone that has this report, I assume we should give them back to Ms. Hall so we can get them back. We're gonna defer this until the next, the next meeting. Alright, that brings us to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Chase, was that second by Dr. Warner? Alright, no discussion, all in favor, cast your vote. Motion passes 7 to 0. Brings us to action items. First action item, adoption of a proposed amendments to Policy 1120, Board Superintendent Communications, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 10.01 for the Policy 1120.
Motion by Dr. Warner, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Halsted. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, my only thing about this policy is the board, when we were on retreat, my understanding was that we were going to be able to contact the appropriate staff directly and simply copy Dr. Taylor on an email, and that's not what this policy says, so I don't know if we want to amend the proposed policy to correct that, or do we need to take everything directly through Dr. Taylor, which is what the policy currently tells us to do?
I didn't think that was what it said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was part of some communication guidelines that we had put together that was effectively a regulation that was not necessarily in the policy. I think there's an, if the board is amenable to this, there's an easy add where you could add a sentence either probably at the end of the second or, at the end of the third paragraph, or even at the end of the second paragraph, where you could say something to the effect that board members may contact staff while copying the superintendent.
Well, this says, "Request for information by individual board members concerning any subject matter which require staff research, analysis, or collection of data." So I would see that as a fairly limited scope. That's where, that certainly- That's where, that certainly would be beyond that 15-minute rule. Is there anything else in here that requires it to go through the superintendent?
I'm just note that there needs to be an S after that, "require."
Any subject matter which, well, request, which require. If request is a subject, well, it depends on what's the subject of that require, but I think I would read it as any request which require staff research, so. But I think that addresses your concern. If we have a question, we certainly can call staff. Now, if we're going to call staff and have an extended discussion, then, you know, that would go through the 15-minute rule. Is that, is that all right?
Just looking for clarity.
Well, yeah, and I think the simpler we can keep it, the better. All right, so, all in favor of approval of this proposed amendment to Policy 1130, 1120? Please cast your vote. All right, where's my vote? There it is. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to oh. 10.02, approval for the submission of an application for the Connecting Kids to Coverage Healthy Kids Federal Grant for the amount of $724,310.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Chase.
Second.
Second by Dr. Warner. I would like to note that this is something that came to our attention very late, and that's the reason it's on here for action rather than information. If it's not approved tonight, we're not going to be eligible to apply for the grant, so. Any questions? No, all right. Please cast your vote. Where is mine? I did push it. Mine says E. Mine's tired. Come on. All right, third time's a charm. This is my third time pushing it. There, oh. Tally the vote. All right, motion passes seven to oh. We'll get it down. I mean, probably be better when we do it early in the evening. All right, 10.03, approval for the award of a future contract for the construction of synthetic turf fields at North Stafford and Colonial Forge High Schools for an amount to be determined pending appropriation of funds. For purposes of discussion, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Randall. Was that second by Sigman? All right, now discussion.
Chris, just out of curiosity, so where, can you go through a little bit about how we are going to come up with the funding for this? And what are the potential negatives in this funding request for us? Like what kind of projects, what might we see sacrificed?
Yeah, sure. So, as you know, the total cost is right about $3 million. I worked with the county staff to identify funding for that. 90% of that funding is coming from county reserve funds or sources of funds that they have identified. Approximately 10% of that is coming from school available funds that are actually, they're still county funds, so they have not been appropriated. So they are funds that were either left over from projects or some prior carryover funds, and that was about 10%. So it's $242,000 that is currently in our school's capital reserve fund, and that could have been from some leftover project money. It could have been from carryover funds from the last few years of operating fund carryover. And then we also have some VPSA interest, which is when we borrow money for our VPSA projects, for our larger capital projects, it sits in an account, and it's not an account with VPSA, and it earns interest in that account. We have to, you know, get that appropriated and use it for another capital project. And so we have that $75,000 sitting in that account, ready to be spent on a future capital project that it has not currently been identified for. So about 10% of the total project cost would be coming out of funds that at one point in time were school funds, but currently are county funds or reserves that they would have to appropriate for us. As far as your question of what could they be used for, the $242,000 technically could be identified by the county Board of Supervisors to be used for any school project. Typically, it's one-time funding costs that we would have to request that for. It's not an item that we can use for recurring dollars out of the operating budget.
Are we taking care of Hartwood's roof? And I'm asking a question, I know the answer, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, so we've spent a lot of time looking at Hartwood Roof right now. We've done considerable, you know, repairs to that to get it up to par. We don't feel like it's like an imminent concern right now. There were some concerns that they had months back where they had a drainage pipe, like a downspout that was clogged that was causing some of the water to back up on some of the flat roof, which was causing more leaks. We've patched that, we fixed the downspout issue, so there's not any direct leaks that require immediate fixes at Hartwood, and we're keeping up with that. And so obviously, we manage, you know, those projects as we are requesting for Hartwood to be rebuilt. We don't want to, you know, spend a considerable amount of money on a roof replacement prior to that.
Are we going to be all caught up with all the HVAC requirements that we needed at Brookpoint? Because I know that those were, it was happening in phases.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that those projects are not going to be, those two.
Yeah, so we have the Estor Federal Grant Funds that were approved. Actually, that project was approved recently. I don't remember the exact date by the school board. And we were awarded that, and I think it was about $3 million. Six million, all right, even better. So, and that replaced, that's for our, the chillers or the boilers. But, but yeah, we're getting caught up on all the Brookpoint projects.
So that will cover, because I know at one point it was, there was one part that needed to be done, oh, sorry. There was one part that needed to be done, and then there was another part, and I just want to make sure that that's going to go along seamlessly.
Yeah, and we're going to try to tackle all of that. I can't say we're going to fix everything at Brookpoint High School, but that's going to make a big, huge difference.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Fulmer, Mr. Anderson? No? All right, then.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so for me, I'm concerned about when I look at this three-R project list, using money for some other purpose. And I also sort of have a problem with, the way we originally got turf fields was, a lot of it was a decision of the supervisors rather than a decision by the school board. And so then, now we're hit with this equity question when it was a decision that was not necessarily made by the school board. And I would also just note, when it comes to opportunities that other schools have, if we're going to argue that every school has to have the same opportunities, then let's remember that not every high school has a preschool inside of it. Not every high school has printing machinery in it. Not every high school has all kinds of things. So that, for me, is kind of a, kind of an issue. But it does seem like the supervisors very much want to do this project.
Any other discussion? Ms. Sigman?
I, you know, I'm just grateful. I mean, if you think about how some of our other funding comes to us, we find these grants, and we're like, oh, my gosh. You know, if we can get a grant to pay for even a portion of something we had hoped to spend money on anyway, or sometimes provide a new opportunity, this is like a 90% grant. Yes, it's coming from, you know, inside the county. Yes, it's technically, you know, us as taxpayer money. But this is something that the county has talked about doing for years, has wanted to do, at least on the sports side of things, has wanted to do since Mountain View got their fields, and hasn't been able to. And someone's giving us 90% of it. So yes, I do understand that on the school side, we're looking at $300,000, $325,000 that come from our side, but this is like Haley's Comet. I don't expect the money's going to come back. If this is the priority that they want to fund, it does allow us to take something off of our list, which is always progress. And it's going to have, I mean, a great impact on the kids, particularly in my district, but all of the kids. Because when Mountain View kids come and play at Forge, they're going to play at Forge, and they're not going to play at Embry Mill, and we're not going to have to watch the weather as closely as we have in the past. So, yeah, it sounds like a, you know, a Garrisonville thing, or a North Stafford or Colonial Forge thing, but all of our students play on all of these fields. And it is much, much better for the athletes to be on equal footing, level playing field. If I can make some sports puns here now at 10-something at night. Because, you know, they do say that injuries happen because you are changing, you know, if you play on gra, if you're going back and forth between grass and turf, you know, if you're not used to one or the other and you're playing there intermittently, that can be an issue as well. So I love the idea of equalizing that, especially with someone else paying most of it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, I mean, clearly Colonial Forge, it being in Hartwood. You know, for me, I think it's a matter of aesthetics as well as parity and whatnot. I mean, there is a true, and I agree with everything else that's been said, too. I mean, I think the issues for injury, and I don't know what the liability is if another athlete steps on our grass field and breaks their leg because they weren't playing on a turf field, and it would have otherwise, you know, avoided that injury or whatever the situation. But I do know that turf has a substantial benefit to the overall performance of the athlete and to be able to help them play. And I think this is a good, this is one way that we really give back to the community in a positive, small way, but also show one bridge built between the supervisors and the, and the school board. And I think that goes a long way. I think that it tells our athletes we respect the effort that they put in. It makes our fields look pretty. I don't know if you saw the pictures in the handout, but that was, that was pretty depressing. You know, to see that bright, beautiful green field, and then I'm like, oh, that was so disappointing. So I think that we, you know, it is a, there's a, there's a cost-benefit analysis to be made, and I think it's been made. I think the return on the investment of the turf field is very high. That's just my opinion.
Ms. Randall?
I just really want to thank Ms. Lowery and Ms. Leicher. I mean, it's nice to have former educators coming back to advocate for students and, you know, their successes. Because as we've heard with all of the talk, whether it be redistricting or bell schedule or what have you, just making sure that we put out opportunities for all students to have an opportunity to be successful. And this is an opportunity for kids to, you know, for so many sports, so many athletes in our high schools. But I really just want to thank Ms. Lowery, Ms. Leicher. I think you've really set an example, and I hope other people, when you see something in the county, that you come and say something to your board, whether it be our board, and as these ladies have done, both boards, and be relentless. I just, I really think that's such a value that you have given this county to put forth so many nights, and you always seem to come on the nights when we have five-hour meetings. It wasn't always like this. But I just really want to tell you, well, thank you so much for really, really passionately, thoughtfully, and kind, you know, going for what you want and asking over and over again. And I just really, really appreciate your efforts. I really do. Thank you.
Anything else? I just want, I want to echo Ms. Randall's thoughts. I have no doubt that we would not be having this decision this evening about to be able to put fields in this summer for two schools that have needed them for, you know, eight years if it hadn't been for these two wonderful ladies. So, thank you. And we would like to see you come back, even if, you know, pick another topic.
We'll give you a list.
Yeah, I mean, really, during, during those really tough meetings that we had with a lot of stress, you know, on both sides of that speaker, it was really refreshing to have you ladies come up and just talk from your heart and not, not be angry with us. So, thank you. And on behalf of all the students that are going to be able to enjoy these fields. And also, I would be remiss not to thank our Board of Supervisors because without that 90% funding coming from them, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I have no doubt of that as well. So, you know, I'd say, let's vote. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Now, you all can go home or you can wait, it's up to you. You're done. All right, that brings us to item 10.04. Approval of boundary changes and the purchase of modular classrooms to relieve crowding at Conway Elementary School. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve, and is that for both Scenario A and the modular classroom proposal? Or what is that for?
I think my motion was the proposal that was brought to us last time, which was the boundary change and to relocateables.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
This is something that the, the modular classrooms is something I'm having a little bit of stress over, and we've had a discussion about it. Because the modular classrooms are being sort of earmarked for pull-out space. And I know Conway is going to have a little bit of a downgrowth, and then they're going to go back up again. And we don't know when we're going to get this elementary school that we actually need to sooner rather than later. So I've just been kind of on the fence about the modular classrooms. I do appreciate Ms. Neely's input. It's helpful to hear staff's input and where this comes from. I definitely appreciate the work of Mr. White. I think, you know, with the redistricting, he has definitely put in hours and hours of work for our entire board and the community. And every time we throw something at him, he always smiles, always smiles. And we're not easy people to work with sometimes, and he always smiles. So I definitely want to thank Mr. White for his recommendations, and we can get into our discussions, but we definitely still seek staff considerations for this. I really would much rather prefer to move more students out of Conway to avoid the modular situation. And, you know, who knows where we'll be. We hope to make a longer-term decision, but who knows what we'll really be in two years. So I do want to thank you for all your time and efforts. But I'm a little still concerned about the modular trailers for pull-out space.
Any other discussion? I have, I have a question. The Belmont Hills community with 13 students, can you show us where they are on the map? I mean, I feel very.
There's two of them.
Yeah, I, the ones that were redistricted, I, I'm very reluctant to do that because we have tried in the past not to move those same kids twice.
Thirty-seven students. Of the 76 we're going to move.
I just want to see where they are on the, on the map.
And the folder. Okay.
And there wasn't any other option?
Nope. Not unless you start pulling from Grafton to Ferry Farm. Yeah, pulling from Grafton to Ferry Farm.
And then.
Well, that's a domino. Well, I don't like the domino.
Yeah.
But I do, I do want to see, see where they are.
So they're the, see where it says PU 157.0, 13. PU 114, 24. Those two sections are slated to go back to Ferry Farm.
Well, what, see, and 157, is, is that, is, that has 13?
Yeah, that's the 13.
So that's the 13?
Yeah. And they, yeah, and then the 24. See what I'm saying about how the Grafton kids? Like golf, go clear Springs, right?
It's really hard.
It is.
Yeah, but there's, but, well, some are going, I mean, some may have started there, then they went to Conway, and now they're going back.
And then COVID, too.
Yeah.
When did they get put, taken?
Three years ago.
The big one, the big one.
Three years ago. So you could have had a kindergartner who is a rising fourth grader. We'll have three schools.
How many fifth graders do we have in this? Do we know in total?
I can get you that information.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so just on the record, I think it's important for everyone to know that this is the most painful process on the planet, and it has not been enjoyable for anyone. But it has, it's, we've really been forced into an untenable situation, I think, on all of these, all of these maps and where to go and how to divide. And I feel like we're sort of, it's like we're paying sins to the Father kind of thing, like for proper failure to properly plan, right? Put the emergency piece on us. The part, the portion that's above PU 167, are they, they're in Rocky Run?
Yeah, they go, they go to Conway, they're Old Forge, and it's 180 students in that planning unit.
Right in the, one on the opposite side?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, but they, they still are staying in Conway?
Right.
Like we said. Okay. I wasn't sure where, like how that worked this way. And that last one, you said that's right near Grafton Village on the corner. It kind of looks like one of the states in the mid, mid part of the country, right? Do you, which one was that? Was, did that have a, because, because it sort of feels contiguous to the other units?
That's would have been, that would have been one of those domino bump things because I would have taken them together.
Oh.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And I would also be remiss if I did not say that had, and I know it goes everywhere, had we rebuilt Ferry Farm, we'd be having a totally different conversation. I would be taking even Old Forge to Ferry Farm, bringing everyone, you know, in, in one contiguous line. But we didn't rebuild Ferry Farm, so we don't have the seats, and here we are.
I also wanted to add, like, again, reiterating everything Alyssa said, but, you know, our first home in Stafford County was in Planning Unit 122. We were, that would not, number would have been 11 if we were still living there. And that is rural. It is not, it is literally two tire tracks in the grass. There is no, I lived past end-of-state maintenance. Those children are not transported. And the only way to get to Grafton Village is to pass Conway because it is one road in and out. But, I mean, you've seen the maps and you've seen our counts, and that's where my neighbors will go. Because, I mean, we vote at Grafton Village or the Dixon Smith, I forget which building, but like, that's where we are now, and it stinks.
Good news is Grafton has an incredible principal. Both, both schools have great principals, but I'm, I'm sure they'll be very, very welcome there. Well, thank you for, for sharing that. And I, I do have some concerns as well about the relocatables. I don't know if this is a precedent we, we, we want to set or we're going to. We talked in the, the work session about having this go to the, the Fab before we go too far down the road and, and putting relocatables where we don't need them for classrooms, for teaching rather than for pullouts. I think we do need to, to be doing some review because we're talking about how much a quarter million dollars for these two relocatables that we're going to use for pullout space. And the school is not going to be growing in the next three years, right? Or is, am I thinking of another school?
It's not projected to right now.
Yeah, it's not going, it's not going to be growing. So, did you want to make a substitute?
Yeah, I wanted to make, can I?
A substitute motion and just to, for the approval of the boundary changes and just take out the purchase of the modular classrooms until such time as we can have more discussion on the costs and all that, right? So I'm not exactly sure how to word that, so don't, you know, but I would just like to make a substitute motion for the approval of the boundary changes to relieve the grow, the growth and overcrowding at Conway, but remove this purchase of modular classrooms, just until we can take another look at it. Is that, is that the right way to put that?
Why do we have to take another look at it?
Because we weren't, right, we weren't exactly sure based upon the actual numbers. Because if it goes down, it comes back up. Are we going to need them? And that, that was what I took from the meeting earlier. If I misunderstood that, let me know. But I feel like...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just taking my cues from what Mr. White and Ms. Neely had to say, and the fact that I know that there are students who have substantial vulnerabilities at that school, not that there aren't at other schools. And we are going to have to deal with that. And I worry that we are going to look at it and just be kicking it down the road. And so, you know, we, we, how much are the relocatables again?
Uh, let me give you an exact.
So we just spent $300,000 on turf fields. So, you know, it's just sort of interesting how we choose to spend our money.
So, so it's two relocatables?
With four classrooms.
Four classrooms.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Sure. Let's see. It's just over 360,000. We're purchasing the modulators for 228,000. That's what's in the agenda item. And then it's 140,000 for the infrastructure costs.
Wow.
I do think it's important, excuse me, I'm sorry, what Ms. Neely brought up, especially if it's something that the board has said at a, at a meeting, you got to honor what you said in the past, which was that when that school got redistricted, that you guys would provide everything for those most vulnerable students. And I will say, as a new board member, you know, just sitting in the audience or watching at home, you guys would say something, and then you don't do it a year or two later, and it really pisses off the county. Not just if it's my school or whatever, but, you know, we want elected officials to, to hold to their word, you know? And so if you guys said, we are going to do everything to support those vulnerable students, and they are asking for that in a plate, like to have pullouts that are like, you know, like a classroom so that they can, I guess, meet the needs best, then, I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable ignoring a promise that was made.
Well, I, I appreciate what you said, but I, I do want to make clear for the, for the board that no board commits a future board. And this doesn't have to do with that issue, but that comes up to us often when we used to have the step issues, and people would say, I was promised that I would get a raise every year. Well, we can't, we, we can't do that. So that, that, that's just a administrative issue. But, you know, I, I think we ha, we did do what we could then. For me, this is an issue of, do we want to do this for a school now without looking at other schools and what the needs are in the other schools, and how are we going to address those, and how are we going to afford them? And if the board wants to, to go ahead and spend this $360,000, then that, you know, that's a board discussion. But to me, the issue is that this is not a necessity. This is, this is more on the, the luxury level because there will be pullouts, whether they're in a relocatable or not. But it's, it's, it's a financial issue, and Dr. Warner had suggested at the, the meeting that at least for, for other schools, we could have the Fab look at this and, and come up with some kind of an, an approach or a plan. Because this is not going to be the only school that's going to, to need something extra. And, and this school is not going to be over capacity, is it, Mr. White? Or is it, I mean, it's...
Uh, in terms, so Conway is slated next year to be with the boundary changes, to be 101% capacity, so it's at capacity.
All right. Well, it's, it's strictly a board decision, but we did have, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second for that?
So just for a matter of, no, no, just a matter of clarification. So I was just, I'm sorry for the sidebar conversation with Susan, but I was trying to clarify, or Ms. Randall, I was trying to clarify, you know, the purchase of the modular, right? So, so trying to have a little foresight to the issue. If we're purchasing it, which is different than just leasing it and not having any sort of ownership of it, if we're purchasing it, then it remains a resource to us that should we need it in the future, and Conway does not, then we can actually, you know, it's, it's, again, looking at the ROI, the return on the investment, since it's now a resource that the Stafford County School System has, then we can sort of play around with those things. So I'm definitely more comfortable than that, with that, because I feel like that's, that's what people are looking for. They're looking for smart purchases, smart money, and, you know, we're sort of justifying it. So if we're going to own it, and someone else needs it in the future, and we can repurpose it for that, then, then I feel more comfortable, if that's okay, to retract my motion?
You can retract, you can withdraw. All right.
Yeah. I'm going to withdraw my substitute motion.
But I would ask if the board would, would send this to, to the Fab for future considerations because this is not going to go away. There, there will probably be half dozen schools that would like to have relocatables for pullouts, and that the children would benefit from that. But the issue is, you know, what is our, our base going to be for considering it, and, you know, what makes it a necessity to, to, to go forward?
And also for clarification, and this could be the Fab, or you can say now, it doesn't matter, but can we get who our class size reduction schools are for next year?
Can I just then clarify then? So if we vote and include the two trailers, and then, what is it, Old Forge has 180 kids, they decide just to homeschool all their kids, that's 180 kids that don't enroll, does that mean we have to put these trailers at?
They'll already be there.
They'll, so like, because they're not coming until...
We're spending probably, what, 140,000 to install them?
Well, I guess like if we order them now, they're not, I mean, but where do we have to decide, when do we have to decide where to install them? Like, is there any wiggle room? Because there's one thing about, you know, I order something from Amazon, but until it gets to me, you know, I don't necessarily have to decide when and how I'm going to use that item. So I'm just trying to figure out that timeline, and if we're going to invest in the, in the items, that's one thing. But if one school, if they don't need it and someone else does, is there the wiggle room to use it somewhere else? And I'm not trying to take them away.
No, 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 no.
I'm just trying to be flexible with our purchase and understand what this motion is actually committing us to.
It's the purchase.
I think the action is committing us to these two relocatables for Conway because that's, that's what we're approving here. And it is, as Dr. Chase asked in the last one, you know, I'm not asking this question, it's a rhetorical question. What are we not going to do if we spend this 360,000 on the trailers? So just a rhetorical question, but it's something that, you know, it's, it's concern one time and maybe not the other, but I know it's getting late.
So can I also ask, I know when we got the trailers at Ferry Farm, the question of security came up, and Mr. Martin came over and helped us with that. Is that going to be, what security will there be, you know, for, especially if they're pullout space? I'd, I want to make sure that if these are vulnerable kids that are going out to the trailers, that we have safety in mind of getting them in and out and, you know, making sure no one's coming, no one uninvited is coming in.
Yes. And we met with Mr. Martin and also the fire marshal, and so we have a good plan that they have, they are okay with, and we considered that with the layout for Conway.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, I have a comment, number, a couple of comments, but I, I do want to thank you for pointing out that we need to have a plan for making these decisions because clearly relocatables are going to become part of our future. It's something that's happened in Prince William, it's, it's something that's happened in other counties. So we, we need a strategy for how to implement it. I have to base my decision on what staff recommended, what the principal has recommended, and what Dr. Chase, whose district is in, feels is in the best interest of the schools. I think that these, these, you know, I've not been to Conway, but I understand that there's a lot of crowding and kids in the hallway and in the vestibule and, and doing pullouts. There, it's very disruptive to everybody. So, so I have to go with, and I appreciate Ms. Halsted's recommendation that these are purchases because clearly, you know, we are going to have to be flexible in how we use things and when we need them and where we need them. But I think we, we do need a, a strategy that, to look at for long-term planning. So I will be supporting the, this.
And I, I just have one final question. It's not for this evening. If our program capacity is designed for the students in the school, why would we not, and this, you can answer this later on, why would we not have room for these pullouts? I mean, recognizing this is a title school, and there's, there's going to be, you know, more needs for the, for, for the pullouts and things like that. So if our program capacity is truly a picture of what we have room for based on the population in the school, then I would think that we would need relocatables as long as we were not exceeding the program capacity. So that's a, that's a question I'd like addressed, you know, for another day. Because I, I think if we, certainly if we're over capacity, no question, we would need it. But if we are either at capacity or under capacity, I would question why we would, you know, want to do this. I'm going to support it because I think we will, if not today, at some point in the near future, need these, probably at every school in the South Stafford and maybe along Courthouse Road if we don't get those new schools built.
I also wanted to add, you know, as an elementary parent and having a lot of conversations with elementary teachers, parents, I feel like pullouts in small groups as we recover from COVID is going to be so, so crucial because, I mean, even in my own third graders class, there's kids who are doing fantastic. There are kids who are just hanging on. There are kids who can't read. And that may not have been the case pre-COVID when they're, you know, in school and not virtually learning and having, you know, their, you know, kind of regular schooling. But now, in a single third grade classroom, we're seeing a much greater range of, one, ability level, but two, just classroom decorum ability because they haven't been in the classrooms for, in a, in a regular sense in the past couple of years. And that is being handled, at least at my kid's school, with pullouts because you're having to work harder to keep these kids on task because they've been, who said it? Kids have been coming in feral, and they've said that with love and with respect, but they just forget how to stay in their seat and do their work. And...
And it's very destructive.
So that I want to send over when you talk about what we're looking at, that that needs to be a factor, I think.
Ms. Guy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I said...
Okay, all right. Well, then, all in favor of the motion to approve the redistricting as shown and the purchase of two relocatables for Conway, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, 10.05, approval or deferral boundary changes to relieve crowding at Hartwood Elementary School. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
The, or defer the boundary changes to relieve crowding at Hartwood Elementary.
Okay, is there a time period to defer that to?
Uh, you know...
Next year?
Yeah, next year. Just one year.
Okay. One-year deferral. Do we have a second?
Can I?
We have to have a second, and then we can discuss it.
Substitute motion.
Well, no, you have to have a second before you have a substitute motion. At least I believe that's the case. Is there a parliamentarian here? Oh, thank you, Ms. Vote right. All right.
I, I will second to move things along.
Good for 11:06, huh?
So I just wanted, and I don't know how to do this, but...
We need a second before we...
She just seconded.
Okay, for purposes of discussion.
I have no problem with what she's asking for. I just know I'm new here, and I've been told March is already too late. So if we're going to defer and say a year, we're saying March, and I don't know, like, I think January, like, I don't know, like, just, I want to give you as much time as possible, but I don't want to be here in March.
To be honest with you, I was about, when she said, do you have a time? I was thinking six months, or if you'll advise me when we're coming up on that.
Fall is usually the time to start on these things.
We get our September 30 numbers, and I know I rushed you this year to get the, as a preliminary EAP for us in November presented to us in December. I would say by year, because then you'll have numbers.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I would say at least that, that November number, you know, from our September 30 numbers is probably a good range of time.
I'm, I'm absolutely okay with that because you guys all know better how that flows through.
Well, we know better, but here we are sitting at March 22nd making this decision that should have been made a couple months ago.
Heck, no. No, no, no. And again, I was about to say, whatever the board thinks is the right timeframe. I mean, you'll, all you'll do is light a fire under me and my...
If you could bring something to the board, or you, if the superintendent could bring something to the board, you know, sometime before the end of the calendar year, then we would get a early start and hopefully have it done before this time next year.
I, I, I have my pause for this.
All right, with Ms. Halsted.
Yeah, yeah.
My pause for this is the, the septic and well capacity of 710, the school capacity of 605 projection for next year. And, I mean, it's 599 right now. Oh, it sounds like price. And then a staff number of 95, bringing it to 700. That's, there's my pause. So help me through that, somebody.
Well, if, if I can, Dr. Chase, I just, so, so it's, I don't know that it's, you know, we've, we've worked these numbers, and, and in the interest of full disclosure, I've just asked the board for the... I've just asked the board for a little latitude and play because I'm so new to this board seat and I think the Hartwood resident, I, I know that other, we seem to be feeling like we've kicked the can or whatever and I'm not trying to do that, I didn't even know there was a can until the budget meeting.
It's called a can of worms.
Yeah, exactly, nobody told me it was a box and Pandora's name was on it. But, so I'm simply asking for the time to be able to do my due diligence for my constituents and see if there's an alternate solution that doesn't require busting across county with the absolute utopic hope that there is a Hartwood rebuild or whatever. However, I'm not trying to keep overcrowding schools and blowing up septic systems or making anyone's life more difficult. What I'm trying to do is get a grasp of the reality of the situation and not try and formulate decisions based on 14 seconds in a seat. I don't find that to be very fair to the constituents in Hartwood and I really want to do my best for them, so I'm just asking for it now to the sewer and, to the septic and system. Again, the understanding is there are certain variables to the system, there were upgrades made to it. I know it's a per person, per whatever thing, but, but I also understand there's some variable fluctuations in there. I'd like to investigate that if we can find out it's an urgent, there's an urgent need. I, I mean, I think Hartwood parents at this point have a sense that there's a redistricting in their future if we can't figure this out. So I would also ask them to contact me, to help me put something in place and if we can't, then just to understand that, that this bus, no pun intended, or maybe I did mean it, I don't know, this bus stops on that day that this, this time clock stops and that's it. Like, there's only so much I can do and if they'll work with me, I'll do it. And if I can't do it, then I'll throw myself at your mercy and I'll beg for another reconsideration.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Dr. Chase.
So, so I did second the motion, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support it. I'll just tell you, staff's recommendation is that we do need to, to move some bodies or some seats out of the school. And I am concerned that while we may be saying that you're going to have a different deadline, if the septic system breaks down, the deadline just changed and it changed really quickly and it changed in a way that is going to be very difficult for the county. If we're having to pump and haul sewage away from Hartwood, we may not be able to keep the school open. So that's, that's where I have pause.
Ms. Sigmund?
So I have the memory and this was, I guess this year, we did have to shut down Hartwood because of a septic plumbing type issue. We had to bus all the kids to an alternate location. Again, elementary parent, that's just not ideal. I want to know where we stand with that type of issue as far as things like that recurring. Because I know we're not at capacity, we're not supposed to be at capacity next year even, which is the only reason I would consider this at all. But that kind of monkey wrench with kids so little and buses, emergency bus needs in the middle of the day or at whatever time during the day is kind of scary.
So the issue we had earlier this year was a water issue, not a, not a septic issue. And honestly, we could have that problem if we had five people in the building or a thousand people in the building and it's just because it's aging infrastructure. We did install an alarm system on our water reserve tank that alerts us if that starts getting low and, and sends some, some emails to not only the principal, some maintenance staff as well. So if, if that starts approaching a, a level that we're not comfortable with, it's going to alert us and we're at least going to get ahead of it instead of more reactionary when we get to the school and realize that there's no water pressure. So we put in a little bit of, some safeguards to try to buy us some time there. But that was a, a water issue, not a septic issue and, you know, like I said, we, we can always face that problem. There's no guarantees that, that we're not going to run into those problems again until we do some significant improvements or a rebuild.
Can I also say, there's still no guarantee in any of the schools that you won't get a water main break external to the, the facility and that that won't infect, that won't affect the, the internal structure of any of those buildings. So we're, I mean, anything can happen on any given day to any school, elementary, middle or high. That's, you know, I mean, someone crashes into a telephone pole, the power goes out. If our backup generator fails, I mean, it's just, you plan for those things, but, you know, you can't necessarily, you know, I can't place the fate of every student in that, in, in Hartwood on the one day that that might or might not happen. I have to place my faith, faith in you that you guys will stay on track with the water and the septic and make sure that those systems are as functional as possible.
Yep.
All right, I'm, I'm going to support this because we're not moving students out because the school's overcrowded. The school is not over capacity today and they're not going to be over capacity next year based on the projections and they'll be barely over capacity the year after that by maybe a, a half dozen. We're moving students out to make room for new students to come in. So the, you know, premise that we need to move students out so we don't overburden the system is not really practical because we're planning on new students coming in. And I think this, this pause will give Ms. Halsted a chance to, you know, look into and, and work with the staff to look into that new growth and where it's coming from and is there a possibility to address the growth, you know, by, by some other assignment? So I, if, if, if this school were overcrowded today, I, I wouldn't feel the same as Ms. Sigmund. I mean, it, it, we couldn't do it. But it's, it's not, I mean, it's close, but it's not, it's under capacity. It's projected to be under capacity next year and, and I don't, I think it's a reasonable request, so I'm going to, to, to support it.
What is the new program capacity?
Dr. Warner, did you have something?
What is the new program capacity without-
It's 622 seats, that's assuming, so if, what I have here is this year's data and assuming we just were to change the-
Oh, without-
Class size, without class size reduction, you get an increase of the 51 seats.
And that's the same school?
Same school.
Same school?
Yes, and so, you know, some of the highlights of that plan, you know, are that without class size reduction, we'd add 51 seats and then Hartwood is projected to receive 180K in state CS, class size reduction funding that would be forfeited if the school exceeds the class size caps, so that funding would go away.
But we would actually save some money because that funding does not pay for all the extra teachers, correct? In, in the past, that's what we've been told.
Yes.
It does not cover the full price. And it, it will go away one day, same thing with Hampton Oaks. So anyway, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a, a comment. You know, it seems that a lot of the problems that are facing some of these schools isn't from the, it, it's from the new, new construction and the new growth that's coming in. And maybe we need to address how we assign those students to schools and where they're assigned so that we aren't displacing students that have, are, are there and families that have lived there for years and we're assigning those students to a school that's got space.
If, if I could add one thing, just something to think about. I've sort of heard this from the community, hey, you know, move new development, move those new students in somewhere else. So one of the things to think about is on the transportation side. So we talk about, you know, with our boundaries being contiguous and islands, well essentially you may be creating an island within a subdivision because some kids are going to school A and another section may be going to school B. So just something else to think about on, from a transportation perspective, I just wanted to-
But you, you, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not talking about as a permanent solution because the permanent solution is we need new schools.
Agreed, yeah.
Period, there is no, we need, we need Hartwood rebuild, we need at least one more elementary school, we need our high school and if we don't get new schools, we are just moving the chairs around on the deck of the Titanic. We need schools. This would be a temporary policy or a temporary solution because we can't keep moving students and disrupting families. It's painful and I appreciate that Ms. Halsted and Ms. Sigmund came on the board and had, this was one of the first things they had to deal with. It isn't easy, it's very difficult. But I am concerned about Hartwood because of the infrastructure. So I, I, you know, I just think that we need to, to make solutions that deal with the growth in a more effective way and we need more schools.
And I think, if I could clarify, are you talking about like, like developments that are planned but no children exist yet?
Right, yes.
Because those play with our numbers, those impact our numbers, but not one piece of dirt has turned and we know when we think those might come, but, you know, anything happens. So I do think that we as a board need to sit down and look at which developments have not even broken ground yet and before they start selling and before they start building, look at potentially reassigning some of those neighborhoods to take the burden off of our, you know, existing communities and put them into our, our green schools.
And, and we have done that in the past.
Yeah.
We've done that and, and then, I'm thinking of Long Courthouse Road, we've, we've done that for, you know, a few developments that came in that we knew the schools that were in the attendance zone were going to be exceeding capacity and we've assigned them to another one. So maybe that's something we can ask the superintendent to, to look into and, and that would be something that would be worth having a board work session on.
Particularly Hartwood, they've got a lot down there that looks like it's coming, but isn't here yet and now would be the time to-
Decide where they go.
Well, isn't, isn't that where those 180 new students are going to, it's projected to come from? For pretty much new development, you know, for Hartwood. But that, 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 let's, let's circle back to tonight and the decisions, Ms. Guy.
So I, I, I do have, like, I worry about kicking the can, but I get it. And I probably will support this in the interest of teamwork with Alyssa because I do worry about the infrastructure and I understand that that was a water issue. But there is sewage issue at Hartwood, right? That was a different time, am I, am I not correct on that or?
I've only heard of the one time, oh.
Okay.
We've spent a lot of money, I know we spent a lot of money on that septic. I mean, like, probably over a million dollars at least.
Issue is that there's septic at all and that limits us.
So just to, well, you have finished what you were saying.
That's what I was asking, in my head, I knew that there was a septic issue at Hartwood and I just, that, that's the only thing that worries me from this delay. But if it's handled, then I guess it's handled.
I think, as Ms. Sigmund said, the issue is it's on septic. It's not a particular septic issue, it's, it was the only school we have that's on well and septic and rather than public water and, and sewer.
And it, and it's aging.
It's aging and, and we have, we have spent money on it trying to keep it going. But I would think that if there were any issue, that Mr. Anderson would be up here letting us know because I've never known this board to not put any health and safety issue at the top of the list. And we've never turned down any requests that represented a health and safety concern. We found the money when, when that was necessary. But I haven't heard of any current needs for the septic or, or the well or, or anything that you're aware of, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I can answer that question. So if we're ever out of compliance, then it'll be three months in a row and we'll need to have an action plan, so we would have time to respond. You're obviously increasing the risk as you increase capacity of the school and what we're talking about is wastewater discharge. We don't want to have too much and then we would be out of compliance with our permit for wastewater at Hartwood. So that's the issue.
Have we ever been?
We have been over, but we have not been out of compliance where we've had to submit a, um, action plan to the Department of Environmental Quality. But they would work with us and it may be very difficult and as I said, you're increasing the risk of being out of compliance. We're not out of compliance right now, no.
And there is, based on the information you provided at the Fab C, there is a repair septic tank for Hartwood Elementary scheduled.
Right, that's a, that's a funding item that-
That's a year-end project.
Right, and that's really more related to the pipes underground. We're trying to straighten out some pipes and improve the drainage, that's really a separate issue.
So, so to go back, I don't want to make Hartwood over capacity or, you know, make toileting needs not happen for people. I just, I'm, it's just time to figure out. I believe there's other solutions that maybe have not been considered in the short period of time that we've been given to really look at this issue. And so I'd like to look at that and I'd like to be given the opportunity just to fight for my people in Hartwood to see if I can, if I'm doing the right thing by them. With the quid pro quo or the PSA, if you will, that they're going to need to fight with me and they're going to need to go to the right people and talk to the right people because that's going to be the most important part. I mean, to put it into perspective to what Dr. Warner is saying, a Hartwood rebuild, right, correct me if I'm wrong, gives me 400 extra seats. 300, okay, so, see, correct me if I'm wrong, 300 extra seats. I mean, that's a big deal, that's 10 years, I'm fine. So, so we need that help advocating for the urgency of these, of the building of these schools. These aren't secondary projects that are dispensable. I mean, we really need to move through them rapidly and so I hope we can impress upon the public the importance of that and the urgency of it.
Okay, any further discussion? Cast your votes, this is for deferral until the end of the calendar year.
Oh, he tallied without-
Well, he's trying to move us along, I'm sure he's tired.
I know.
Thank you for tallying the vote. I was still pushing my little button. Motion passes five to two. 10.06, approval of boundary changes to relieve crowding at Parkridge Elementary School. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Which, which one?
Oh, which one? B and D combined, whatever that number is. 202, is that 202?
Yeah, I believe it was 202 students, yes.
So it would be all of the districts in B and all of the-
Yes, it, it would be, it was, uh, option E, reassign seven planning units, 202 students, plus or minus.
Option E in our-
Next year Garrisonville would be at 97%. Parkridge, 98%.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wright, can you say that again? If we redistrict the 202 students?
Yes, uh, Parkridge and Garrisonville would both be under 100% based on our projections next year and five years out.
And five years?
Yes.
And, and that includes, gosh, I can't, and that includes, no, 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 and that includes the projection of the students coming in as well on the new Embry Mill builds?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I want, just confirmation.
Yeah, Embry Mill is, it's, um, moving along pretty good. There are not as many units as there used to be.
So they would both be under capacity for five years?
Yes, barely, 97 and 98%, so they're sort of at capacity. Five years from now Garrisonville slated to be at 94, uh, Parkridge at 98. So again, at capacity based on our current projections.
Could you put that slide up on the, that's the option E?
Yes, let me, uh, put through that.
This option E, this is the first time?
Well, it's, it's, it's actually B and D combined.
I understand, I'm just asking though as-
Well, I, it's just, I, I hadn't seen it in here, I'd just seen B and D. So all of the units in B were under consideration and all of the units in D were under consideration. So this, this combines them to, to get to 202.
Yes, this is what that scenario looks like. Essentially, it takes all the planning units and it does create an island, you know, with Embry Mill. But in terms of achieving, uh, the goal of getting Parkridge below 100% utilization, it does that.
Okay, discussion?
I'll start because this is where, I mean, we, nobody wants to move. We'll, we'll start there, we had our work session and that's where all this comes from. Because trailers to keep the school at 122% capacity is just not workable. I mean, I thought, I was making a joke by saying kids would start lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning, they actually will and some of them won't even get to stay in the, in the cafeteria. I don't know how to get around that. I don't know how to deliver specials, I don't know how to deliver, you know, special education services, speech services, focus and gifted services. Then we were looking at moving other groupings. We were looking at, you know, Alyssa had brought up an idea about moving fifth grade over to middle school and I said, "Well, what about moving kindergarten to another building, share it with early childhood?" Kindergarten is just not big enough to make a dent in what we need to move. Then I was getting feedback from staff that 175 to 180 students is not going to fix anything at Parkridge because they'll still be at 100 and 101 capacity. They'll still have art in a cart, they'll still have music potentially coming to the classrooms. That's a burden on the teachers in there and it doesn't really solve the problem of too many people or too many students in each individual classroom. Classrooms, it's just unfathomable to think that we have gotten to a point where we have 200 more students in a school than we- 200 more students in a school than we should have, that we're looking at coming down from 29 children in a kindergarten classroom after a pandemic during a shortage of staff to 24 and being, you know, happy about that. It's, I just, and I get that the pandemic made it very hard to see what these numbers might look like, especially not knowing when or if we would come back any given fall. I mean, how do you redistrict when you don't even know schools are going to open? But this is just such an awful situation. Phase one of Embry Mill, even if I wanted to move them to Garrisonville, it's not enough people. Phase two of Embry, like Goldilocks, phase two of Embry Mill is almost 400 people because it's one planning unit. It's one bad, I can't even call them option after another. None of these are options. But you know what else is not an option? 122% capacity.
Right.
And I don't know how to fix that except to move people. And I don't know how to move enough people while still maintaining community for even the people we move. I mean, when you move 200 students to a school, that's more than 25% of the school. That's like where they're going.
Manager, can I?
Ms. Sigmund.
Can I relieve Maureen before, so she can take some water? So, you know, I have tried with Maureen as well to kind of look at some different ways to handle this and the difference is the geography, which in with she is so confounded by. And that's super stressful in looking at these things. So my inclination was to be like, no, we're not going to, we're not going to redistrict anything in Park Ridge until we can, you know. But it's literally impossible and when I look at this, this number of students, 1,000, it's just so overwhelming. I mean, the burden on the teachers alone with the class sizes and the whatnot. So, so to be fair to Maureen and to advocate sort of on behalf of the position that she's in, because of the poor positioning of all of this housing to elementary school blocks, it's really difficult to figure out who's going to go. And again, she inherited, I don't know what you call it, a growth issue of things. So I feel like, I feel like Maureen has exhausted every single possibility that she can and she's discussed and researched and reviewed. And if there is another way around this that she hasn't found, I don't know if we ever will. So if, that being said, if any other member of the board has found it, then I will certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm open to discussing and changing my mind on it. But I mean, I will say, I feel, I really believe every avenue has been exhausted in looking through this.
I can assure you, I've had conversation with Maureen and.
Every day.
Mr. White is.
You're sending him a Christmas card?
But there's a lot of, a lot of options and scenarios that were developed to try to find a solution for this.
Yeah.
Ms. Randall?
So one of the things is that Park Ridge at program capacity, 841. Park Ridge as, is almost going to be slated for 200 more students than its program capacity.
Not slated, they're there now.
But that is.
And they have been all year.
But the thing is, is that the problem with that is that if that's your capacity and we're over, one of the things that I really appreciated from the community outreach opportunity that Dr. Taylor gave us to sit with constituents is that the staff and principals in no way, shape or form want to lose one person. They would rather sit crowded, which is what they asked us to do. I mean, that's why this can, like I gave the history lesson, that's why this can got put to this year because nobody, everyone wanted everyone to come back from the pandemic and just assimilate. Didn't want to change anybody, move anybody, hurt anybody. And we respected that and gave that. And that's how staff still feels. However, they will tell you, they are tired. There is not enough paras, there is not enough teachers in that building to maintain this for another year. Also, the, you know, our first job is about the whole child education. And yes, a change and a move is horrible and hard, but what I am so excited to hear is the, the things that I've heard about the Garrisonville staff and principal really wanting, knowing this is huge and impactful, but wanting to make it an inclusive part. And they're not waiting until summer. They're going to be doing it this spring. So to me, that warms my heart.
The principal's sitting right out there. At 11:34.
Yeah, I mean, and that's just, that to me is just awe inspiring. I'm sorry, I didn't know. But to me, that's awe inspiring to know that the welcoming is going to, I mean, even Mr. Sidebotham told Sarah and I, or Dr. Chase and I, that he wishes we would hurry that decision up two weeks ago because he wants to get them on the calendar, to get them in the school, to get them in the community. Like, it's that important that we're honestly late in making this decision yet again. But to me, I just feel like the, we got, we want to try to get to a five year. Do we know that we'll probably be sitting down in two? Yeah. But we just need to help our teachers and help our students. Their whole learning is impacted. You think a class of 29 is doing as great as a class of 19? I, I taught classes. I could do, you know, in my high school, if I had learning challenge kids, class of 20 versus college prep kids, class of 37, you know, what I could do with the 20 versus the 37, completely different. I know our teachers are Superman, but they don't wear three capes. They can only wear one. So I just really feel like that impact of taking students out is huge for our staff and our students, especially our students who we're first advocating for. But also, thank you Garrisonville principal for, you know, really wanting to do right and exceptional by the students that you will receive. So I thank you.
And I also, like, I have, since we started in public schools six, seven years ago, my husband and I have gone to every redistricting meeting. I mean, we had a third grader at high school redistricting meetings because it affects our community. And every redistricting, it's always, you know, you see option A and option B and option A is like, move option B, move option A. It's a fight. And Park Ridge is not that way. Ever, did, I mean, we've gotten so many emails and they want to stay together and they want to stay in their school. There is not one email that says, we'll move them. You know, move the other guys. They're my neighbors, but save myself, move them. And that, like, is so refreshing and like, if you're looking for the good in that, it's like, this is a community that is a true embodiment of the word community. And it's awful.
Well, I think I said once before, redistricting was the hardest part of I've ever been involved in as a school board member. Mask, I'm a close, close to it. I almost reevaluated, but we got, we got through mask. But redistricting because it impacts the families and I've never had a volunteer, you know, who wanted to go, including my daughter. When she got redistricted, I think I mentioned, from Park Ridge to Garrisonville 21 years ago. And she cried because she didn't think there was going to be any school spirit. Well, and she got there. I'll never forget our principal meeting. The principal at the time had been there for probably a couple of decades and she said, I know, green and orange are ugly colors. You know, they're, they're not red, white and blue, you know, like Park Ridge, green and orange, but you'll learn to love them. And we did, so.
And every year they send us a gator package.
Yeah, that's right. Wait, wait all, gator week.
Who picked the green and orange though? Like, who?
Whoever, whoever, whoever started the school.
It was someone in the school board meeting.
It's actually, it's, it's the, I think that, isn't that Florida? Florida, Florida gator colors. I know. But anyway, that, that's just, that's what I remember from my parent meeting because I didn't know this principal from anybody. And I, I mean, I was a, you know, a, a new parent. My daughter was in the second grade and it's like, oh my gosh, you know, not only are we getting redistricted, but we're going to have colors that weren't attractive. But they, then they, they changed them. They, they've had neon, they've had sherbet, but back then they were really ugly. But now, now they're better. But anyway, that's, it's getting late. I apologize for rambling. Yeah, well, I know. Well, it's almost, if we want to, if we want to go to midnight, I guess we could talk a little more or we could have, we could have a vote. So the, the option, the, the motion is to approve the redistricting of all the planning units in B and D for a total of 202 students. Is that, that's correct for? So that's what we're voting on. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, that brings us to 10.08, approval of the 2022. Oh, 10.07, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm moving along. Well, this, this should be pretty quick. 10.07, approval of boundary changes to relieve overcrowding in Drew Middle School. Dr. Chase, do you have a motion?
Well, I do, but first I have a question because.
We have to have a motion before we have a discussion.
I just need advice on which scenario from staff because, so I can move, I don't know whether I should be moving for B or C based on, on, the concern was Drew Middle School losing too many students and that cutting down.
On program.
On programs. So, so if that's, if that's still the case, then I would motion for scenario C unless I've heard something else.
Want you to motion for that and then you can always amend the motion if.
Motion to approve scenario C for the Drew Middle School boundary change.
Second.
Okay, motion, Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Guy. All right, do you have any advice from the audience, Mr. White?
Actually, having to do with programmatic, we're able to, we're able to accommodate programmatic needs at Drew in either scenario.
So C is, C is the larger number of?
No, C is smaller.
C is smaller.
58 versus 112.
Then I would amend my motion to scenario B.
All right, Ms. Guy, do you accept that amendment?
I sure do.
All right, so we have a motion. Can you put scenario B up here just so we're clear on what we're voting on? I don't think this one was quite as controversial as any of the other ones.
No, and, and I actually, when Dr. Taylor and I were at Dixon, we talked to the principal there too and they were very amiable to anything that we needed to do. But he was also, is the same as Dr. Chase is. He was respectfully asking that we make sure we not make a, a problem for the middle schoolers, not to have the full middle school experience with all the programs.
At Drew.
At Drew, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion for the scenario shown, scenario B? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. All right. 10.08, approval of the 2022, 2023 school year bell schedule. We have a motion.
Motion to approve the 2020. Well, should we start from the bottom and then work our way up?
Don't worry, there can always be a substitute.
All right, so I'm going to say motion to approve for the purposes of discussion, option three on the bell schedule for, as proposed by the superintendent.
All right, we have a motion for option three.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Motion by Ms. Halsted, second by Ms. Sigmund. Discussion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to pick option two. Elementary school first, middle school and high school.
Second.
So we have a second, we have a substitute motion by Dr. Warner and a second by Dr. Chase. Discussion?
I just, you know, this is, I have gotten one thing out of all the emails that I've received. Nobody wants to go last. Everybody wants to go first. And there are valid reasons from everybody, but the one thing that I come back to is instruction. Our largest number of students is in elementary school. It is the largest block of students that we move with transportation. And even though the efficiency from moving high school in the morning is better in the morning, the efficiency in the afternoon gets worse and some of our elementary school students start the day the same time their parents do, which means that we have five and six-year-olds who are going to put in a 10 or 11-hour day before they even get home. But we also have academic success that we can look at and see that even coming off of this pandemic, that our elementary students were recovering and were gaining and growing and their PELs assessments and their MAT assessments. So I, I have to, I have to, I have to go with the instructional point because to me that's the most important thing that we do.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Randall?
I don't disagree with what Dr. Warner is saying about the instruction in the elementary piece, but I feel like for comparison purposes, and I did ask the last time, you're talking elementary's had successes, but it's come on the backs of high school because there, we don't have data to support that going last for our high school students has worked out. As a matter of fact, we hear quite often that it really hasn't worked out. We don't have information about our middle school. So I just, I feel like you're right, no one wants to go last and four o'clock in Stafford is god awful on, on any given day and now put it on a Friday or put it on a Monday and it's horrible. But for me, I just feel like, you know, the one thing that I, I really said to Dr. Taylor is there's been enough conversations in the emails. And again, I can't thank our citizens enough for writing us letters. My, my one thing that I sometimes hear is they didn't listen to me. Oh, I can assure you, we heard you. And it wasn't, we didn't agree with you or we didn't ignore you or any of those things. We heard you. There's so much argument for each of them. Science, yes, I'm biology major myself and science information you can find to support whatever means you want. The sleep factor, I would venture to guess in our high school and middle school kids is greatly affected and, you know, I know Dr. Chase has been an advocate up here for it, is the devices. They are not getting more sleep, they are on their devices. You know, I can tell you, I'm one of those horrible parents because you didn't have a computer in your room and you, device, devices, phones, everything was downstairs by 9:00 PM. But mom, I have, I don't care. Plugged in downstairs. It's called parenting, it's a verb, it's an action that is hard to do, especially right now because the kids are really connected to each other and their devices. But, so they're, they're not getting more sleep and we moved sports clubs at 7:30 in the morning to make it so governor's school kids can't participate and if you don't have your own transportation, you can't, you can't participate. I just feel like there's so many negatives to the high schools going last and, you know, we already have in-school intervention for elementary school. We have in-school intervention for middle school. We have zero for high school. Zero. So to me, I just, option two is just not appealing to me. I can't support because I don't feel like, and I have said to Dr. Taylor, there's been, you know, enough things brought up by every level of problems and I really hope that a parent group and a staff group are brought together because a principal's is nice, but the one, the boots on the ground are talking to us and telling us this is a problem. So I don't think it's about adjusting. I honestly think it's about, there needs to be some changes and, and definitely need to be listened to.
Ms. Halsted?
So I'm gonna, I don't normally like to read stuff. I like to know exactly what I'm going to say, but I felt like this topic was too important for me not to have some things written down. So I want to start with the number one argument that everyone's been bringing up, data research, supports, whatever, whatever you wanted to support, it will support it, I guarantee you. If you plug that into the computer, Google will help you out. But we had one research study. But we had one research study conducted here in Stafford, which told us everything we should have been listening to, and I, only brought up option three, because I felt like we needed to discuss the options. But, so what I want to say on that is that the parents did say, first, the high school students said, first, we have a very small window of time left with our high schoolers right now. They have been denied access to educate, adequate education, academics, instruction, social structure for the last almost three years, if you stop and think about it, right? We've taken away a good deal of what defines them, not just today, but as adults. And I'm going to back some of that up. So let me begin by pointing out that relying on science the way we have, by its very nature, is the antithesis, is what science is about, because science is a subjective, it, it operates on a subjective basis, right? I come up with a hypothesis, not all science, we've got Earth and all those other engineering, chemistry, I know all that, but, but science, when you're talking about different things, is subjective. And it is absolutely one hundred percent can be the victim of researcher bias, confounding, a hundred confounding different things. So let's look at a few things. Any study that says is generalizable to one hundred percent of the population is not a study that was conducted with any validity whatsoever. Because unless you can involve one hundred percent of the population that you're talking about, your data is strictly about the population that you studied, you can go ahead and generalize in theoretics, but it's not going to work. Science is designed to be refuted, retested, and removed if found incorrect. It's a frame of reference for years, here's your funny one for you. Chocolate, all chocolate was bad for you, don't eat it, it's heart, it's going to give you a heart attack, until one guy came along and said, I love dark chocolate, I'm going to refute the science against chocolate being bad for you, and he did, and now all of a sudden, dark chocolate is good for you, right? Happy for me, I eat dark chocolate every day. So I, I want to caution us how much we throw this around. Okay. Science is not a crutch or an argument when speaking about people because of the individualities of human beings and the needs of those human beings. Relying on science as this case is like planning an outside wedding in May, because the weatherman said it wouldn't rain. All right, so let's talk about a few things. Science doesn't find, does not define reality for our kids. Reality defines reality for our children. Our high schoolers have the biggest reality in front of them right now. They have been academically deprived, their instructional time has been shortened, and we haven't really shown them a lot of respect and love, and that has been obvious in some of the ways we've dismissed their concerns. All right, so let's talk about this. Extracurriculars are not dispensable to a high school teenager. I'm sorry, they're just not. If we're talking about research, I'm going to tell you about the amount of research that I have read that talks about extracurricular activities, sports, jobs, clubs, volunteering, and the academic success of students in high school, not only just in their four years of high school, but as they moved on later on. They are more prone to being admitted to college, to wanting to go to college, they're more prone to, how shall I say, happiness, and they are actually more prone to later on success, making, earning higher levels of money. The research is all out there. I sent you just one article on athletics, because I wanted you to understand. You know, when you start in elementary school, and I'll get some of the elementary kids, I have not forgotten them, when you start in elementary school, you build a basis for what you're going to love as a sport, because the sport helps you. It builds accountability, responsibility, leadership, relationships, community. How are we missing the point that we sat here and signed a governance document saying we are going to support the whole child, and we have broken our high schoolers apart in pieces? We've told them their sports aren't that important. They're not extracurricular at high school, they're co-curricular. I don't care what anyone says. They go hand in hand in hand, they build that child into who they are going to be. Are they going to be captain of the team? Are they going to be a bench warmer? Either way, that sport builds confidence in them, because they're part of something bigger. I have a child, she's a competitive gymnast at eight. You know how many times she wants to quit, but I tell her, you can't quit, because that team relies on you. Man, it's an individual sport, but that team relies on you for moral support for everything. So she goes, and she's good, she's got eleven medals, because she's building something bigger than herself, something that when the car's around her, the deck is falling around her, there's something else to build her up. That's what sports do for high school kids. It's not just, I like to sweat and be a part of, you know, Friday Night Lights, because it was a great show. All right, I know, I know what you're all thinking, it's late, stop, but I'm not going to stop, because I think this is too important. Sports are used for college resumes, scholarships, and more importantly, then they, it teaches the kids to be involved, and in the sense of building and expanding on what that community means. That excitement reaches into a community and pulls it in. I hear the band on Friday nights at Colonial Forge from my house, and the kids screaming, and it's the most exciting thing on earth, and I know those kids feel it, and that's the one piece of normal they've had. Four o'clock, did you see those kids that were in here in the IB? I can't even imagine that schedule. That sounds like my master's schedule, how I kept my, my, my rating. All right, let me go to middle, to the, to the rest of the kids. I'm going to forget talking about bus times and schedules and all this stuff. Regardless how we look at this, the high schoolers have suffered the biggest impact from COVID. How do I know this? Because we did, we threw them on the computers, and we said, you're learning good, you've learned, because they're high schoolers, so we assumed they were independent learners. And I can tell you, having a son that was forced to go virtual for his entire senior year, it was a debacle, and he graduated as less than the student he could have been with time to actively get involved in all the things that he really enjoys. Robotics, all kinds of clubs that, that the school could have offered him, but didn't. Those things are so important, and I'm sorry, but doing those things at seven o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon, there's a big difference for a kid, a very big, and by kid, I mean young adult. All right, these kids have four short years to get all their living and learning in, that, that, that we've really, we've taken so much from them. I don't know if anyone else remembers what it was like to be in high school, but I really do, and I remember that the one thing that got me through those insecure times, the hard times, the times when the hormones got to be too much, or I couldn't do, I thought I couldn't do things, was knowing I had band practice that day, or knowing I had basketball that night. And I was just going to be able to forget everything and go be with my friends and experience all that, and they were going to lift me up no matter what. We are taking a large part of that away from these high schoolers if we don't acknowledge the fact that they need to be in school first. Middle schoolers, I kind of feel like option three threw middle school under the bus. I feel like we made them a sacrificial lamb. They were the absolute one thing in the study that we conducted that was the best, I mean, seventy percent, over seventy percent. How can you deny the data that seventy percent of middle schoolers said, leave me in the middle? You can't, you cannot overlook that fact, and it is true. High schoolers are younger, two hours of practice, elementary school kids, God bless them, I love them all, but a sport practice for them is forty-five minutes. Maybe thirty, depending on the age group, because of, it would drive the coach nuts to have to last longer than that. But even their sporting games and stuff, they're on Saturdays, they're not during the week, we're not pulling elementary school kids to go play a game somewhere else. I feel like we're denying our students the totality of their full experience, and we promise them that just by sitting on this board, there is a natural progression in life. We don't like to admit it. The natural progression in life is elementary, middle, high school, life. Life, life starts at six AM for an adult. My work hires teenagers. They never show up. If they show up, or if they're sick for a day, they don't call us, they just don't show up, they'll show up the next day and say, sorry, I was sick. We're like, you don't call in? They don't think they have to. They never had that responsibility before, they weren't told that was important to do. It's infuriating. I work with living beings, not humans, dogs, so I work with creatures that rely on a responsible human being to show up every day, sometimes at six o'clock in the morning. So the sleeping thing is only going to last four years and not much longer. So let's look at academics, education, equity, and our students who are not academically prone. We have put so much time and focus, and I get it, schools are about academics and instruction, but they're about education. And not everyone is going on to college, not everyone was meant to be an engineer, a doctor, a whatever. Some of these kids are going to go and build skills in environments and, I mean, electricians, plumbers, whatever it is. You want your plumber to be like, my toe is overflowing, but he's like, hey, I gotta sleep late, because that's what they told me, and I'm being sarcastic, not on purpose, partly because I'm tired, but I'm, I'm serious. I feel like we need a big check with reality right now. I don't think our elementary school kids would be harmed by the later start time, given the teachers that we have here in Stafford County. I think they're a great group of people, and I think with Dr. Taylor and his ability to get us what we need for them now, because he's on it, he's proactive, he understands it, I think we have a better chance to do more with them than we ever had before. I told you, I put a lot of time, effort, and energy into this, because this topic really has me hot under the collar. I'm, I'll cut out some of these. Elementary school parents?
This is a two-minute warning to midnight.
Elementary parents, I, I have an elementary school kid, I get it, I get it. She's a monster at seven o'clock. She is a monster at eight o'clock. By about eight-thirty, she gets her personality going. That's just who she is. That's a good deal of other parents, too. They are fighting with their elementary school kids every morning to drag them out of bed. How fair is that? It's hard for some parents. It's not just every kid waking up at five-thirty in the morning or six o'clock in the morning, like, hey mommy, I'm ready to learn. I wake my kid up at six, and she is like a teenager, growling under the covers, because she cannot do mornings at all, and she goes to bed at a decent time, she cannot do mornings. Finally, I'm going to just remind everyone on this board, as we keep looking at this science, science didn't elect us. The people of Stafford County elected us, and they were really clear with Dr. Taylor about what they wanted. And so I really feel very connected to the fact that we owe them, and we owe their voices to be heard on this issue, because each of these families are struggling in a special and different way. We talked about equity and our marginalized students and our socio-economically disparate students, who are, are going to have to decide whether they're going to finish high school or get a job. That's just the reality. We do not live in a county where ten miles is ten minutes. I wish we did, this whole thing would be different. And as just a final note, I hate the four o'clock end time. And if we could change that at all, I bet these guys wouldn't hate me as much as they do right now. But that's all I have to say. I'm sorry to get so passionate and hot at midnight, but I waited a long time to say that.
I just want to make a quick comment. Number one, I, I never mentioned the science. I said that our students are doing better. I said our teachers are telling us they're doing better. The second thing, I just want to say, and I'm really tired. I've taught high school, I've mentored students in research, high school students, and have hired high school students. The school, the schedule will adjust, the businesses will adjust, the mentorships will adjust, and the reason I know that.
All right, I think I want to give other people a chance to, to comment, since it is now.
We had one year.
Twelve oh one. Dr. Chase, did you want to?
Sure, and I'll try to be short, but just to share for people who want a sense of why I'm supporting what I'm supporting, which is I, I've taught infant child development, I've taught adolescent psych, and I have a number of members of my family who have been dyslexic. And I'm very aware of how important it is to have literacy and math skills, and I understand that the foundation for that happens in elementary school. And so, so I don't think we're voting to get rid of extracurriculars, I don't think we're voting to get rid of sports. I think what we're voting for is a schedule that will hopefully optimize instructional time for the best kind of instructional time for students, but I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Ms. Sigmund?
I wanted to start, one, by saying that I was really appalled at the commentary that elementary teachers want to go home and do their errands. All they want to do is just get home earlier, because they had one year of the taste of it, and now they want it for themselves, and it belongs to the high school, and I really resent that. Again, I'll say it every week, I had two kids in elementary school during the pandemic. Our youngest was in first grade, our oldest was in third, they are now in third and fifth. The struggle was real for all of us, and I don't know how they did it. But I do want to revisit some of the things we've said. Overwhelming student response, I get it. Six thousand students responded to the survey. They also said they wanted to start at nine fifteen and end at two fifteen. They also, how many elementary school kids did we ask on this survey, Dr. Taylor? Zero. Elementary students were not asked their opinion on school start time, only middle school and high school were. I was really, really troubled by this, not troubled, but, I mean, we talk about overwhelming, there was nothing overwhelming. It was fifty-one, forty-nine both ways. And honestly, the ideal schedule for parents was eight to three-thirty, that's not first, that's second, or at least closest to second in our current thing. Staff, most of them wanted to start at seven-thirty, didn't want to end till eight, or three-thirty. But, I mean, we could take bits and pieces of the study or the survey, it's not a study, I misspoke, and apply it to all of these. And I get that high school feels like they were thrown under the bus, because they were just thrown on technology and told to learn. So was my first grader, and guess what? His reading comprehension was not as great as high schoolers was. He had to learn how to use computer programs where he did not know a lot of the words he was looking at on a device he had never had before, nor had access to as a first grader, to be honest. My kids didn't have their own computers. So he was handed a computer, and we were told to figure it out. And I know high school was told the same thing, but their, their ability to adapt to that change was very different than a kindergartner, a first grader, who was handed the same tools and told to make it work. I also have grave concerns with the fact that we have more than fifty percent of our children coming into elementary school next year that have never had a normal school year. Again, my son was first grade when it closed, so there were kindergartners in when they, those, those closed, those will be next year's third graders. So kindergarten, first, second, and third grade next year will have never had a normal school year. That is significant, and that worries me significantly for the burden we're putting on teachers. As I said in a prior discussion, we've got first graders, second graders, third graders, with varying abilities to read, to hold pencils, to hold scissors, to raise their hand, to even how to have a conversation with an adult that's not their parents. And all of those things have to happen to even get a child ready to learn, let alone actually learning, and those, I don't know how, and I agree that four o'clock stinks for everybody. And I'll have a child at every level next year, and I know that they are going to wake up in the morning to see who, who is coming home at four, and who has to get up really early, and it's not been, it's not easy, and it's not going to be easy. But I also want to say we cannot judge anything on how this year went. Both the successes and the failures or the difficulties, because this year was, one, coming back after a pandemic, but, two, was a five-hour day, transportation issues, new schedule, this is like that first pancake you throw out. You tried it, you make adjustment to your batter, and then you make a batch of great pancakes. And so as much as we've seen great things that came out of this, especially at the elementary level, and some, even some of our high schoolers and middle schoolers like this schedule, this is how we figure out what we need to tweak for the next, I guess, long-term or shorter-long-term solution, and that's what we need to look at. Not how bad or how good this year was, but what we want to do next year to make it better for everybody, and if that means high school stays last, how do we make that work? If that means elementary goes last, how do we make that work? And those are the decisions we need to make, and those are the conversations I've been having, you know, if high school stays last, how do we help the governor's school kids? If elementary, if middle school goes last, how do we help the youth athletes? If elementary is last, how do we combat the struggles that those teachers are going to have? And that's really what our focus should be up here, and the conversations that need to go forward, because the four o'clock end is going to be awful. And that's, you know, what happens after today is really the important stuff, and that regardless of what the decision is, it is our commitment, at least my commitment, and I can, I think I can speak for all of us, we are committed to making sure every student has what they need to be successful moving forward, and making that work for our kids.
Ms. Guy?
Yeah, I just want to, I wanted to say something about what Maureen said.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanted to say something about what Maureen said. I'm so tired. So, in the future, is, if we had more money, and I know it's the future, and we get more buses, would that four o'clock time ever be adjusted or has the ability to be? Like, what can we get Ms. Lowry to do to change the time?
And Ms. Leicher.
And Ms. Leicher, she is equally as great.
That's a great question. And, and I would say all things are, are possible with more buses and more bus drivers. And I think that that is definitely a great target to think about because not only when you add more buses, you, you are, uh, reducing the time on the road for the kids, but you also increase the, the probability of having shorter routes in general, which does make you operate a little bit more efficiency and tightening that up. We absolutely wanna get the kids to school. We absolutely wanna take them home. We wanna give them at least six and a half hours in the school day. Right now, that's what we're looking at. Should we have the capability to tighten that by five minutes in the future? That would be a great improvement based on our learning from next year. And we're learning a lot. As I, I know some folks will, will be really well-adjusted to reality and recognize this. Every start to the school year has, uh, bus challenges as our youngest learners figure out how to ride the bus. Our elementary learners, no matter what tier they're on, the, the realization that if you are K or one, you're, you're gonna have to have an adult that, that gets you off the bus in the afternoon. There are some things that will cause some natural delays in the system to start the school year until we find a rhythm. I would say, and, and I, and I know that my team is probably sweating this, but I would say judge us by September, not by August. And if there's an opportunity to, to, to tighten, we'll know where that opportunity exists and what that looks like. Uh, I have the highest, uh, confidence in the higher probability of success with the schedule that you have in front of you. Well, they're all still on the same time schedule.
No, just a question. I, I will say, um, as, well, my kids are out of college and college and I have a high schooler and an elementary student. But, um, when you speak about how great our staff is at the elementary level in particular, and, and they are fantastic, but they also do it with like math moms, you know? Or they do it with the poke mom. And I was the poke mom and I was the math mom because I was literally there to poke the students to stay awake. Like, that's a big deal. And now putting them even later in the day, I actually truly, I truly forgot that I used to watch kids fall asleep in class until this came up. And I was like, oh my gosh, yeah, it sucked. It was really hard. I would get frustrated every year looking at my kids' calendar. And I'm like, why are they doing math in the afternoon? But I guess it was because, you know, you have, you have, you have the math specialist and like, some, like someone's gotta be last. So, and it was always my kids' class. But then I have to also come in three days a week or whatever it was to do the math mom thing because our kids, um, are about to take SOLs and they need help with math. And there's just not enough. There's not enough specialists, there's not enough teachers, there's not enough funds, right? Put that even later, I, I just, I do think that elementary is the foundation that we build on. And if your foundation is built on sand, right, like it might look good. But, um, I, I don't know, I can't, I can't forget my experiences. And it wasn't just my experiences, it was all the other amazing parents who gave their time because we're not funded. You know, and, and that's, it's a, it's a big deal. I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure how we ignore that. I don't think that a vote for that is a vote to say to high schoolers, I don't care about A, B, and C. That's just not true. We do care about their extracurriculars, we do care about their sports. But it's triage at this point, you know? When you're chronically underfunded and understaffed, now things turn into triage instead of just best practices. At least that's how I see it. Elementary students do do sports and they do do them in the evening after school. My kids did it and, you know, was, was doing it. And their practices are two hours. So it happens. I mean, a lot of the same challenges, it's faced at all the, at all the levels. So, um, this, this is not awesome.
Well, let, let me do my talk. If we want another second round, I guess we can, uh, can add that on. We're still on the, on the substitute motion. I'm not going to be supporting this motion. The substitute motion. And it's not because I don't understand and I haven't listened.
Was the, was the motion. Substitute motion was option two.
This is, this is the motion for elementary first. I, I, I have listened and, and I have, I have come around to appreciate the early time for elementary school. However, I also appreciate the hardship that this late schedule has placed on our high school students. And I appreciate all of the staff at every level that have communicated with us. The high school teachers that say, I really like being able to have coffee with my spouse before I go to school. But for my students' sake, they need to be there early. My students need to get in there, they need to get started and they need to finish so they can go on for these other activities. And I think we just have a different view of the, the education that we are providing. And, and, you know, whether it be all instructionally focused or the whole student. And I'm, I'm looking at the whole student. Every year I go to graduation, I am just in awe of these students who are graduating. That, you know, they are a product of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, to say, you know, we've had all these issues in the past, clearly we've been able to overcome them because we have amazing graduates. I mean, you go to graduation and you see all the scholarships and, you know, where the students are going and the different careers, you know, what's happening in the school. So, so we have done, you know, a, a good job of developing that whole student. And if you look at our mission, which I'm not gonna quote now because it's too early in the morning to, uh, to remember it, but it, it, it goes towards getting our, our students ready to succeed in society and their, and their career and, and their further education wherever they choose to go. And for me, that high school experience that comes after the bell rings is, is a vital part of their development as a student. And it's not just them out there playing, it's them having those contacts. As, um, Ms. Halsted said about learning the leadership, the, the camaraderie, the ability to get along with others. And, and this is from their contact with the coaches. And whether it be athletics, whether it be robotics, whether it be band or drama or the clubs that we have, these opportunities are not available to the students this year. For, for a variety of reasons, some of which we don't have sponsors because, you know, of the time. So I cannot support putting high school last. That having been said, whatever decision is made, I would urge this board to let it stay in place for a period of time because we cannot keep disrupting our community and our students. When this went in, you remember, it was not a seven oh vote for, well, yes, but this board, a majority of this board approved the former superintendent's recommendation for these changes. There was no contact with the community that I was aware of. There was no communication with the staff or the parents or anybody. This was, just said, we're gonna do this. And, and the real kicker, this is gonna help transportation. This is why we did this switcheroo because we were gonna solve our transportation problems. Well, all the worst transportation problems I can remember were after we did this switch. But the, the, I, I guess the light is what we've seen in, in the elementary school. So, um, while I, you know, I appreciate that, I, I, I want, I, I want personally to see the high schoolers go first. And, and, and my suggestion for option three is not because I think it's good for middle schools. It's good for nobody. Nobody on this board has had any indication of, and, uh, any affection for the third tier. But we have to have three tiers. So, I, I, and, and if we, if, if that were to come, I would ask Dr. Taylor to see what we can do, particularly for the, the, the sports and other after-school activities for middle school because we would have to do something for that. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but if we were, we'd have to. But at least the, 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 the middle school seemed, there's, there's fewer middle schoolers than anybody else. And I haven't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that there's an educational instructional difference. And, and I, I get that they haven't had a chance to respond, but I can't imagine that there would be anybody that would respond saying, oh, I like tier three. Put me on tier three. I am assuming that no one in middle school is going to like tier three just as almost no one in elementary and almost no one in, in high school. And I'm saying almost because there are some. There are, you know, there are a handful of, of, you know, students, staff, and parents that have said, you know, I like high schoolers, I like, I like being at the end of the day. Or the elementary, I, I, you know, prefer to be at the end of the day. But they, by, they are by far the exception, by far. So what we have is a competition for who goes first. I do think there may be some shock for some of the elementary schools that are currently going in at eight twenty. If this option is approved, those schools are going to move up to seven thirty. So I, you know, that's, that's gonna be challenging. And I wonder how many parents really know that that is what's under consideration here. That you might be going at eight twenty, but next year you're gonna go at seven thirty, which means your kid has to be up before six o'clock or, or whatever. So, so that's, that's another consideration. But I, I would ask this board that whatever decision is made to, to stick with it, to, you know, to, to, to let it move forward, um, whatever it is. So, um, if, I, I wouldn't like to, I wouldn't, unless it's something really, really urgent, Ms. Halsted, I don't wanna, I mean, we can start a second round, but it is twelve twenty in the morning.
I just wanted to comment, I just, I just wanted to make a point that I appreciate that Maya is always, you're always eye con- eye contact and I appreciate the fact that you, you understand. I didn't come here to disparage elementary school or their learning piece, but I already knew there was substantial support for them. And so really the high schoolers need the advocacy at this point because their struggle is real. And I feel like elementary school kids still have ten years with us, I mean, ten, twelve years with us, depending on where they're starting. So we still have a margin of, and, and I'm paraphrasing, but it's, we have a margin of error with them that we don't get with the high school kids. This is literally the last grasp for them that we have. And we haven't been able to, to serve them for three years. So whereas K through three has never had, or two has never had a normal school experience, we have high schoolers leaving to go into the real world with no normal high school experience and none of the, the pitfalls and the happiness that comes along with that, the rites of passage of high school. But I wanted to say, just because I don't agree with you doesn't mean I hate your idea or whatever. I know you know that, but, you know, I'm just saying. And, and I feel like we, but I feel like we enter into this world where if you advocate for one thing, you're against the other. That's not true. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I just wanted to make that clear.
All right, well, anybody else wanna say something before we take the vote? All right, so the, the motion under discussion is option two, which is elementary first, middle second, and high school third. Please cast your votes. Mine didn't go. Tally the vote. All right, motion fails. That brings us back to option three, which is high school first with one elementary school going first, and that's Rock Hill because of the Garrisonville-Rock Hill interchange. Elementary school second and middle school third. Correct? All right, so that, that is the motion that we're voting on.
Have not yet had a chance to discuss it.
Sure, why not? I thought we were discussing it generally when we had our comments earlier.
And I'll just be brief and I'm sort of reiterating something that you said, which is that middle school families, this was brought the Tuesday before spring break and then we had a week off for spring break. And so I don't really feel like people have had much time to even realize that this was, that this was an option. So, um, I, I have a problem with that. And then, of course, we've already talked about the additional operating expense and the fact that it's dependent on our actually being able to get bus drivers and being able to get buses. So I can't support it for those reasons, but it will, of course, be the will of the board.
All right, well, there's always a third option if this one doesn't pass. I guess that would be option number one. So if this doesn't pass, then we'll have, we'll be able to have another option. Do you have anything, Dr. Warner, that you wanna add? Ms. Sigmund?
Again, I think these all stink. And I actually wanted to know, I know Dr. Taylor said we would need six hundred buses to get to a one-tier system. How many would we need to get to two?
Four hundred and some change.
Okay, so we need one of those little thermometer things that we can color in every time we have a bus?
You're, you're about, uh, you're about one hundred and eighty off.
Okay, so, goal.
Where are Ms. Lowry and Ms. Leicher?
I got their number.
They got to go to bed. They're probably sleeping, all right. Are you done? Okay, Ms. Guy?
Just, uh, Ms. Halsted had, had said, and I called you Alyssa earlier, I'm sorry. It's hard to go, to go, I know, I apologize. Well, Homegirl had said, um, that you mentioned, you know, that we have a lot of time with elementary students, you know, left. Obviously, we have more time with them left than we do with high schoolers. I just wanna speak for elementary students who have, who have problems reading. I was the elementary student who could not read very well. I could not read out loud. It takes years and studies, and I know there's science and now trust it or don't, whatever. But practically, I can tell you, if you're not caught up in on reading level at third grade, you're, it's so hard. It is incredibly hard to, to just matriculate when you can't do what everyone else can do. And you can have the best teachers and, and I have the best mom on the planet who was a special education teacher and she still couldn't help me. So I understand how people feel, but we can't get those kids in last. I can't imagine how much more accomplished I could have been had I had the help that I needed in elementary school. So there's no way in heck I'm gonna, if this one fails, I ain't voting. Because there's no way that I can vote for elementary students to go last. Not after the COVID issues and just knowing that it's really hard for them just to stay engaged. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
Mine is sort of a question piece. So I went online and I looked up the start times for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different counties. And one of the things, of course, with Prince William and Spotsy, you know, that's who we compete with and whatever for, um, sports for high school level. But one of the things that I noticed, Chesterfield, for example, they have like such odd times, like, uh, multiple levels starting within five minutes of each other. So like you have middle school at seven thirty-five, elementary part one at seven forty-five, high school at eight thirty, elementary school part two at nine twenty-five. In Virginia Beach, you have high school, elementary, middle, which is what we're looking at right now. But the start times, uh, like even in Prince William, high school goes first at seven twenty-five and seven thirty. Middle school, eight starts at eight ten, eight fifteen, eight twenty. Like, how, how can they, um, do this within? Some of these are bigger divisions than us, some of them are smaller divisions than us. But how are they able to do that where they can move, uh, multiple grade levels at the same time? Because in this option we're looking at right now, we only have one elementary school, uh, considered in the high school loop. Why isn't it more? Or can we do, would we do better if we did a seven thirty start time for? Or can we do, would we do better if we did a seven-thirty start time for some high schools and more elementary? And, I mean, I know it's all too late, but I'm just, like, how do we do that?
In an, you know, in an absolutely perfectly efficient system, you actually would have every single school starting at a different time.
Like minutes?
Yeah. And, and some of those larger systems are, yeah, are, are very much operating on their own unique schedule because they're fighting with the same issues that we're fighting with, which is inconsistent geographies throughout the county. The geographies in the northern part of the county are very different than the geographies in the southwest part of the county, and so, so are their bus routes. And so are the times that the kids are on the bus and how they have to accommodate that they stagger the times accordingly. Now, like with every schedule that we've come across and the ones that we've investigated as well, there are positives and negatives to that. You definitely can run a more efficient bus system in terms of on-time arrival if you stagger those times. But it does also throw you off a little bit in terms of what type of programming you're able to do and what consistent timeframe you're able to do for afternoon programming or after-school programming and different types of consistency that you have throughout the county in terms of communication and what your expectations are. There are some drawbacks. So, you know, there, there are definitely some advantages to that. I will say that, that our, the third tier, the third, third option that the board is looking at right now, the one elementary school that is the outlier is actually a problem solver in this situation. But if you put, because it's in the Rock Hill gems kind of corridor in terms of A.G. Wright, Garrisonville and Rock Hill so that they're all at three different times. And so you're actually kind of solving that Furnace Road issue. But you couldn't put them into that middle tier with elementary schools all at the same time anyway because you don't have enough buses. You're, you're, you're literally a dozen short.
Even if we did like a governor's school, high schools first, the other two in the middle tier to push more elementary schools potentially. I'm just wondering, is that feasible for, I mean, we've talked about the gross number of buses we would need to move to two-tier or whatever. But is that even possible for us? Or no?
Is it possible? Yes. Would it add to, no, would it add to confusion? Absolutely. Would it add to some inconsistency in, you know, interscholastic competition and that sort of thing? Whether it's, you know, debate or whether it's, you know, field hockey or tennis, your, your schedules would, you would want to try to get them as close together as possible. Middle schools in particular, the same, same deal. You'd want them all together to the extent practical. It's maybe less relevant for elementary schools to be all at the precise, exact same time just because their, their afternoon and after-school programming can vary and, and doesn't have a whole lot of interscholastic cooperation that's necessary. So is it possible? Yes. Is it ideal? Sometimes. But, but again, it's, there's positives and drawbacks to every kind of option that you're going to have. And you're just, you're just introducing different variables.
And the last question I have is, at all three levels going last was a very direct response for activities in sports, whether it was elementary. But most of the time, elementary does have to wait for a parent to bring them home after work. And I know I've heard from elementary staff, you know, they have kids staying till six o'clock, you know, the YMCA programs and stuff do. But it's also a problem for the high school. It's also a problem for the middle school. And I guess I would want to know, how, how would that, I mean, because we still have two options left, how would that be addressed to help because of that four o'clock? You know, awful time. How would that be addressed? Because a lot of issues from the very organized athletics in the middle schools to, you know, the high schools, they've all been proponents of how much that's a challenge. So what are we going to do to address that?
Well, I, I think you bring up probably the most relevant questions in terms of this option because we can't make that decision in a vacuum. We definitely have to have the involvement of the folks that are dealing with those challenges directly. Middle school athletics for sure would need to change some of the things in terms of how they would, they perform their function in terms of competition and maybe even in, in terms of practice. Whether that means utilizing an indoor space for, for some of their practices to, to better utilize daylight hours or whether it's using competition space at a high school or a place that has a field so that officials can be used more efficiently. There's a whole host of things, but they, they are going to be critical and, and really trying to solve what that might look like. Because I, I don't think that, that, that we could just say this is the best approach without really enlisting their feedback and getting their response to, to how best to proceed. And there's a, there's a whole host of other, other supports that we would want to also provide that may involve an activity bus as well that we would want to look at. So there may be some positives as well as some drawbacks to that and, and looking at really what kind of services we could provide if this was what our new normal looked like.
One of the problems we had last year with transportation is it prolonged the start of middle school sports. And so if you were a fall sport coach, your season was extended, but your, there was a problem of pay. I don't know if that ended up getting resolved or not, Chris, but I know then the next season was shorter, but they still got the same pay. So I'd like to, you know, I know you say don't judge until September, but the reality is since we start in August, you know, high school sports start before that, but the middle school sports start soon after that. But we couldn't do that because, so I'm just wanting to make sure, like, everything is taken into consideration.
Well, one of the positives, I would say that, that you have in terms of after-school activities with option three is that your greatest amount of available buses is available in option three in the afternoon. Your least available amount of buses, because it's the smallest number of buses needed on tier three, your greatest number of buses that's needed is in tier two. So you're, that's your pressure point. That's the pain point that you're experiencing in the schedule. But you get to tier three, you, you end up having a surplus of buses and you could, you could potentially have an abundance so that, that you could do travel even before the end of the school day in middle school. You could do travel at various times that would make that a little bit easier.
So are you saying with option three, again, high school will lose the amount of buses that they could have available for activities where students stayed after, for tutoring?
So with all three options, high school has a reserve of, I believe we put in 20 buses.
Okay.
And that's actually in one of the attachments. And, and, you know, that, that, that's worth noting that we've, we've reserved that as part of the high school tier. That's not 20 buses that would be used on an AM run, obviously, because, you know, that, that wouldn't be needed for that, that purpose at that time. But they would be part of the PM run and, and just for high school, and that would be a part of that process. So that's, that's several for each school at the high school level.
Well, let's, let's let Ms. Halsted go and then we'll come back. Did you finish? Did you have anything, Ms. Halsted?
I just, I just have a comment, which is, I think this goes, we're looping right back around to the redistricting conversation. Like, a lot of this discussion is, I feel, and correct me if I'm wrong, handled by schools. High school six, if it's built and if we have access to that school. When it's built, when it's built. I mean, that really, this is, I think this is where you really need to see the urgency of how bad things are in that way. Like, we could have easily been done two hours ago with this conversation if high school six was in place because the commute times are that much less. We're not transporting students across county and all over God's creation and worrying about different things. If the elementary schools are built, we're literally here, 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 here with our school. And so for me, it's just another indicator of how badly we need to catch up and build our schools.
All right. Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So I just wanted, you said the pressure point then is going to be in the middle tier. So are you saying that we're at risk of, and maybe you're not, maybe we'll be fine, are elementary school students getting to school on time?
You're, you're more likely going to have a couple of issues, not, not getting to school on time, but in the afternoon, you're going to have some issues that will cause a pressure point to middle school. But you will have some more surplus buses to respond to it because you, you will definitely have a delayed departure time in elementary school, at, at the very least, the beginning of the school year. And you will have some buses that, that cannot drop off a student because there is no adult to, to collect them, and then they will have to double back to the school. And, and that's definitely something to manage. But, and, and a good thing to look at might be the buses required sheet. And, you know, looking at the third option, you know, you're, you're, you've got, you know, the third tier is 157 buses, just prima facie, looking at the middle school level. That does give you some flexibility, but it, it does make that a little bit tight. The advantage that you have with that, with that third option in terms of that middle tier, even though it is very tight with elementary school buses, is that for the most part, most of these bus routes are shorter than middle school or high school bus routes. So that is an advantage. And so that should help someone.
And, and again, that working is going to be dependent on, on us having 1.6 million for the buses and having a half a million for the bus drivers.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm just making sure I'm clear on that.
Are those buses, is, is there any question that we're not going to have money for those buses?
It, it is going to have to be a, a follow-up budget conversation. But I, I think you've got the capital expense of the, of the 1.6 million that you definitely have some options because it's one-time money. It's the ongoing expense of the drivers to go along with it. And, you know, that, that can be handled in budget reconciliation.
Ms. Sigmund?
I didn't really have a question. I just, I had a point I meant to make, but it's well after midnight and I forgot. In my time in Stafford County, I've come to know several of our, our drivers and people in the Transportation Department who are kind of more boots on the ground. And I sat down with my friends and brought them option two and option three because I can't support an option one. So out of these two, knowing transportation was our biggest concern at the start of this year, I was surprised to learn that a lot of our drivers felt more comfortable with option three because, I only have four kids in a minivan, but apparently elementary schoolers are really excited to go to school in the morning, and that starts on the bus when it's dark, on Mountain View, on Poplar, on all these roads, and they don't have phones lighting up their faces. So you can't see if it's Johnny or Suzie or Benjamin, you know, throwing his lunchbox or bouncing around. So they cited a safety concern. I did ask about the pressure between tiers, and they actually, in some cases, most often in elementary, they thought they might actually have too much time in the middle of the day because the routes are shorter. And they worried about, about sitting because there's that whole, well, you can't pick them up early, so you kind of have to guess. They did say that a big, big concern is getting into the schools once we're there. And that's honestly what added to our problem with August buses, is that busing was delayed. So more people started driving their kids. That created a bigger traffic issue at many of our schools that don't have two entrances. And then the buses are sitting in the same traffic pattern, and then those buses are late. Even though they're there, they could see the school, they just can't get the kids there. So I think that we as parents need to be cognizant of that. We need, I don't know if buildings can be creative in getting, you know, we know now which schools that's going to be a problem. So I just wanted to share kind of that transportation angle. I was honestly shocked about their, their perceptions on driving the kids at these different times on the different routes. Some of them were super local, like Garrisonville District drivers, where they're, you know, three-mile routes. But some of them are doing, you know, 17 to Mountain View and don't even have time for a second tier because of the distance that they're driving. And I feel like giving them as much lead time to plan the routes is crucial. And making sure that that's done properly will, will help with the transition. So that's what I have to add there.
All right. Any other comments? I've had my say earlier. All right. Then we will cast your votes, and this is for option three. Elementary second, except for Rock Hill, which would go first with the high school and middle school third. Cast your votes.
I think you're the only one that has.
It's the clicker. Slow. Tally the vote. All right. Motion passes. We've got two information items, and my suggestion would be, unless anybody has any compelling reason to discuss these this evening. If you have any questions, send them to Dr. Taylor. Otherwise, these will be back there, administrative matters. 11.02, award of a contractor staples in the amount of $372,223.95 for Air Max air purifier filters using federal grant funds. I'm just waiting for Dr. Warner to join us again. Yeah. And 11.04, award of a lease contract for copier services at Riaj USA Inc. for an amount not to exceed $675,000 annually to be paid from budgeted FY22 operating funds. Unless anyone has a reason to put these on for action, they'll go on the consent agenda at the next meeting. All right. Having said that, we'll say the next board meeting is April 12th at 7:00 p.m. and I assume we're not going to have that one go until 1:00 in the morning. See you then.
I don't know that copier contract might.